Jason. Ready when you're. Ready when you're.
Okay. We're good. Uh, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Cecil Township Planning Commission at.
It's August.
I'm sorry?
It's August.
I'm reading the agenda.
To approve.
I'm sorry, I saw approval of minutes from July eighteenth, I didn't see that. My bad.
That's, it's, no, it's on me too, I, I'm just reading and not thinking, so thank you.
On the web is correct.
Yes. We'll go with August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five. Alright, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
I approve. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, uh, next item on the agenda is the review of previous decisions. Uh, Jack, do you have any news to bring back to us from the Board of Supervisors this previous month?
Looked the, uh, the agenda some, or on the same page, Dan, do you, do you remember anything that? Yeah, the liquor license transfer, um, was passed and, um, let's see. Hoffman subdivision was accepted. There is gonna be a, uh, conditional use, uh, hearing for Embassy Park Associates, uh, at the next board meeting. Well, it doesn't impact us, but it's, it's one of the items that is coming up, uh.
Jack, if you wanna get back up to the top, that was, there was one other thing. So, a while back.
Can you talk, your mic's gone?
Did we talk about that ordinance?
Dan?
The, uh, the, the board approved the ordinance that actually condition, that, that allows them to decide whether they want to accept rezoning applications. I don't know if you remember that one. That was a while back.
That was a few months.
Used to, yeah, it, it just took a little while to make sure that everything was, had the right notifications and everything else, so they, they did finally approve that one.
Right.
I think those were the planning items, and the other ones you talked about.
Yep, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is old business application two zero two four dash zero zero one five Gillespie subdivision plan.
Right, we do have a representative here, but Dan, you could, uh.
Yeah, sure, so last month, uh, we had received this plan, uh, we had issued a letter with a number of comments, and, uh, I believe it was tabled last month.
It was.
They submitted a revised plan that have addressed all of the technical comments that we had on the plan, so, uh, we're, we're recommending that it be approved. Uh, just conditioned upon, uh, approval of the Washington County Sewage Council related to the, uh, I believe there's a, is this the one, uh, uh? Yeah, there's pit and park tests on the lot.
Right.
So, um, so it's pending their approval for that.
And the only thing that hasn't received approval, do we know if they've applied for anything for the sewage council?
Yeah, they've, they've already done the pit and park tests with the council, yeah, it's just a matter of the final approval of the planning module.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Christie, just so you know, that's what's up in front of you right now?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Scudano.
I move to approve application number two zero two four dash zero zero one five Gillespie subdivision plan, um, with fulfillment of the requirements of the Gateway Engineers' Letter dated August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and upon, um, approval of the Washington County Sewage Authority.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now on to new business, application two zero two four dash zero zero one eight Liberty Grove parcel plan subdivision.
Yeah, so last month, the, uh, Liberty Grove plan was before us, and I believe the board tabled that. And Mr. Rank was here, and he had discussed that he was looking to, uh, really just subdivide and sell a large portion of that, uh, property off, so he's taken the first step in doing that, so he's still, he's still dealing with the single-family subdivision he wants to do, but he wants to create a parcel that he can sell. So, in front of you is a plan that creates, uh, a parcel A hyphen R R of about forty-three acres, and then Lot two hundred, which will be about, uh, six point three acres. So Lot two hundred is the one that's gonna be further subdivided into a s- a str- a s- a small street and some lots. Uh, but that's not, that's still, that, that application's in, but that plan is still under review, so what you're approving to, tonight is just the ability for Mr. Rank, if this plan's, moves on and is approved by the board, that he can sell parcel A dash R three.
So the, uh, board knows, we do have Mr. O'Connor, who, uh, is actually purchasing, uh, the property. He's here with us tonight, so if there's any questions, you can ask him.
Is, um, this is prior to having to address anything with, um, the erosion and sedimentation control where the stormwater was gonna go, and this, this subdivision has nothing to do with that part, correct?
Correct, this is just a simple two-lot subdivision.
Okay.
That's all, yeah, that's all you're, that's all you're proving.
And Dan, this is a clean review, or do you have?
Uh, we, we have a letter dated August twelfth, uh, there's some minor comments, uh, that they need to address, nothing, nothing of any significance. They just need to put an easement on the water course through the property, um, locate any streams, which they'll do at the same time, they already have that information. Note on the HOP permit and the, uh, non-built, uh, non-building waiver, which they have on there, this'll just be, I assume, Mr. O'Connor, that once this is done, you purchase this, are you looking to attach this to your property, or you'll keep them separate? Will you keep this as a separate parcel, or do you plan to combine everything together? Yeah, it's not required. That's it, so I, I would, I would recommend moving this one along. The Gales people can take care of these comments before we get to supervisors.
I'll make a motion, we approve application twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one eight, the Liberty Grove parcel plan subdivision plan contingent upon addressing the items listed in the Gateway Engineers' Letter dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. And so that is the, now we're to discussion ordinances amendment, amendments. Jack, I note that it wasn't listed as under ordinances and amendments.
Yeah, um, I, it was not, uh, done intentionally. That was, it's open for discussion as far as, you know, because you're still within that forty-five day window, you can discuss it at any time. It was just not a, uh, an item that I, I put on there for, you know, discussion. You can choose to discuss it if you wish.
Do we need to open up for other discussion first, or this?
Um, yeah, I think that was kinda what I was thinking, was let's make sure we got nothing else that needs to come before us before we take the deep dive. So, I, I don't have anything, is anybody else of it, on the commission have anything else they wanna discuss?
I didn't know if, um, Mary Ellen is here, and she wanted to discuss the letter that she sent, we did see it. If there's anything that you wanted to make comment of, or if there have been any additional developments since that date.
Can you step, step up to the microphone if you would, so we can record this? State your name and address.
Jack, well, she's coming up, uh, she references a July eighteenth letter as well. Well, we CC'd on the July eighteenth letter, cause.
It was the same letter, but it just didn't have the attachments, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. So, so basically it was, um, it was the same letter you received that I scanned and found.
That was the initial letter that I sent.
Okay.
With, with photos.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mary Ellen Lane, is my maiden name, L A N E. My maiden name is Brozak, and the address is five forty-five Georgetown Road, Lawrence. Um, and there's nothing new to report from what I've mentioned in my letters, other than I did hear yesterday from the Army Corps of Engineers, they called and said that they plan to do a study on Chargers Creek, but it will not be until January of twenty twenty-five, because they're waiting on funding. He referred to it as F Y twenty-five funding. Um, I think that's, I don't believe I heard anything else of relevance. Oh, and I, I think somewhere in one of these letters, I mentioned that the Washington County Conservation District did come down and look at the property, and they're adamant in the fact that they can't do anything because of Army Corps of Engineer issues or something, or imminent domain, or I don't know, I don't understand all that. And also, I, I forgot, was the, um, Department of Agriculture. They were working with the Borough of Houston. And I contacted them, and they too have not been able, are not able to provide any funding for us to finish or do some work down there, so that that water doesn't come in at the corner of my property. So, the reason I brought this to everyone's attention, like, including all, you know, everybody, was because I was hoping somebody might know of some way to get some funding where the property on my neighbors on my side of the street could finish work that was done on that so-called dyke that the one neighbor initially started. And he did that with his own means, his own equipment, his own, um, he purchased the dirt, what have you, the Army Corps did not do that. And he only was able to get so far, and he ran out of money. And I was, we were just hoping that maybe something could be done through the township or, or funding that you guys might know of, that would finish that off for us. That's about where I'm at.
Mar- Mary Ellen, I have one question for you, I, I'm sorry. Because I, I, I don't know, how, how often does it flood like this, in your observation?
Well, it's, the house, my house, my home was built in sixty-four, my dad built it.
Okay.
Never had flooding until we had Ivan. And we had Ivan in oh four.
Oh four, yeah.
The whole, that whole valley down there where I live got it.
Okay.
There's been no more flooding until this April, twenty years later.
Okay.
For me, just the way the house is positioned, I don't get the, it, it comes like to my pad, end of my patio, and I'm done. But the house in the middle, which used to be, it was built by Barnes, and now it's, um, Klein Smith lives there. He, he gets slammed every blessed time it rains, and, and he, like, two weeks in a row in April, when we got all that rain, he got flooded both times.
Right.
And it all stems from where that water comes in, on that corner of my property.
Right.
It just seems to go straight up.
Right.
And the, and also this time, the house at the very bottom, it's a, a modular home, or
Yeah.
manufactured home, one of the trailer. It used to be Haley, now it's, it's owned by, uh, his nephew Jason Snyder. They got it the second time in April when it rained also.
Okay.
And it, it's like it's all coming from that corner.
Is that, um, and, and I, I took a drive out there, is that an existing, um, creek or stream normally? Or is this just a flat grassed area that usually doesn't have any water on it?
There's, there's never any.
Never any water on it, okay.
Other than on the other side where the creek.
Creek is, yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but there, yeah, there's no, no other streams or ponds or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and you feel the solution is to extend the dike or the berm, you think that would keep the water flowing?
That's what we're thinking, and if there could even be fill put down there, you know, that, in that corner, like, all these contractors are, you know, that, especially with that roadwork now, and the, the sewage place, if they could put fill there, you know, over, and that's a roadway in the front of my, so-called front of my house.
Right.
That, where the railroad is, that's actually a roadway. That was a service road for the, the railroad back in the day. But now it's, nobody really uses it to mount anything, so it's growed up, we just keep it cut.
Yeah.
But if, if a truck could go down there and dump something, it might be of some help, but I don't know how you address that, and is there permitting involved, or, I don't want code coming and saying, hey.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is with Army Corps being the one that says, yeah, we're, we'll touch it, but we can't touch it until we have funding, and you have these other entities that are saying, we can't, we can't do anything.
Yeah, everybody, it's, we can't, we don't have the funding.
Oh, it's we don't have the funding, not we can't do anything?
We can't, uh, we can't give you the funding, I guess is how it's.
Okay.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, though, the Army Corps owns the floodway and the floodplain of a major, I mean, when you look at the FEMA maps, you're gonna, I mean, that's what they own, they, they'd have to make improvements to prevent flooding, that would be the Army Corps jurisdiction.
Uh, no, they don't own it. It's their jurisdiction, though.
Okay.
The property owner owns the property.
Okay.
Subject to whatever, whatever the boundaries are within DEP. I, I just have the FEMA map opened up here now, and it's interesting that your home is, you've probably seen the map, right, your home is outside of the flood, a hundred-year flood, uh, the zone AE, which is the flood plain.
Right.
So you have, along a creek, you have a floodway, and then you have a floodplain, the floodway is where the water travels. The floodplain, I just tell people it's where the water fills up to when there's a flood. And it's, that whole area down there is all, it's studied already, it's got elevations on it, as to what the flood elevation is. So, it, you know, there could be some sort of a flood improvement project, but number one, the Corps has to improve it.
Yeah.
And then if you're doing anything within the floodway, that's a major deal for a permit, everybody, you know, it's a, that's a, that's a, that's a stream encroachment permit, that's a, a joint permit, they call that, that's Army Corps and DEP. So, I, 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 I'm not trying, I, I think you're on the best path with Corps of Engineers, because if, if they fund the study and they produce the study, then the DEP, then, then at least either federal money or state money would be available, because there is a plan in place to do that, if they, they agree that that, what's, what's need, needs to be done.
So even to put fill into that passageway and what have you would not be advisable?
It's, it's not permitted. According to, anytime that you work within the bounds of the creek, it requires a, a, a permit for, for doing that.
Even though it's at the end of my property?
Uh, when you say it's at the end of your property, it's, you mean, you mean.
My property goes to the corner.
The tail of your property as it goes down to the creek? Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't advise you of doing anything, because you, whatever you do might impact somebody else, and that's why they're studying it. That's usually the reason, one, you know, a creek is temperamental, if you don't allow it to come in somewhere else, where's that water go? So they're probably looking at that, and maybe there's no impacts, or the impacts are further down on, I don't know, is there a golf course fur- is Valley Brook downstream? Cause I know.
It's pretty far down.
Yeah, cause I know Valley Brook floods too, uh, the, the country club floods down there, the portions of those, those golf holes flood down there. So, they would be studying, they, they would take a look at this, and they have a model on this. They'll, they'll see what happens to the stream as it further, it goes further down, in fact, I can see a golf hole on the next, it's not that far down. I can see it, yeah, so, that, that floodplain broadens out right past you, so they might say, hey, for this short stretch where this happens, cause, cause the creek kinda opens up as it gets past your property there, it looks like. And the water's probably rolling down there, and just as it starts to make that turn, it's probably, there's some sort of a backwater or whatever.
Well, Frosty Valley is, if you, if you're going toward Bridgeville, it's Frosty Valley's right there.
Is that the next one, is that Frosty Valley there?
Valley.
Okay.
And then where I live, and then you go the other way toward McMurray, then you're in Valley Brook.
That's right, you're towards Valley Brook. But, but I think you're on, I think you're on the best path for doing it, I, I wouldn't advise going down there. I mean, you wanna know the height of the dike that it needs to be, they'll be able to establish elevations and whatever else they wanna do. Without a study, just randomly going in there and doing something, that probably wouldn't be a good idea.
Thank you.
I mean, to get the Corps to even do a study, uh, is great, because they're making people up in the north hills that I'm aware of, they, they're making the municipalities up there. If they want the Corps to do a study up on Pine Creek, they're making them pay, the municipalities pay for it, the Corps is. So, if they're moving on it, that's good.
He did say January.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
So that tells me that they already recognize that it's an issue.
Yeah, and they're probably doing it because they already have the other dike, that, the dike's already down there along another part of the creek.
Anything else, I just wanna make sure.
Yep. Yep, no, I appreciate that, I, I was gonna ask, and I was gonna ask for the, I figured I'd ask for the crowd, and she could come up, so, so that was perfect, that was. Um, is there, are there any other items before we go into talking about oil and gas? Any other items that the public would like to address the commission on? Okay. Well, then let's go into oil and gas. Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to address the commission on, related to oil and gas?
Uh, Candy Wath, your Elm Drive, um, I had a question about the written ordinance, do you guys have that? Okay, I have, um, questions about that, well, actually not questions, maybe questions, concerns, anyway. So, my quest, first, um, concern that I wanted to bring up to you is the, uh, um, it is, let's see what page it is. It would be under C, and it is one, then the letter E. And it's about their, um, all protected structures within two thousand feet of the property line shall be identified. Okay? When you get to the next page, under three A, it says that if any development activity on the site, then the operator has to provide a property owner within four thousand feet. Why would one property owner be notified four thousand feet away, and the other ones, the protected structures are two thousand, it seems like they should both be two thousand?
I have the same note.
Okay. Alright, um, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but my other question is, is on three, and then the letter E, it talks about the, um, the operator notifying the township about hydraulic fracturing and flaring within seven days prior to them doing it. I'm not an expert in the oil and gas industry, but it was my understanding that flaring happened when they needed it to happen. It wasn't like they can plan when it's gonna happen. The next, uh, um, one I had was on number five B, setbacks in sighting. My question there is, what is the difference, if you can tell me, between a property line and a lot line? Does, you know?
Who's five, what is it, five?
It is, um, five B, the letter B.
B.
B as in boy.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I would guess that the lot line is a, the difference is, is that it hasn't been developed yet, it's not, it's a, it's a proposed subdivision, or proposed, you know, it's not like it's, what am I trying to say, so it's a, it's a housing development that hasn't been developed yet.
Correct.
So that would be a lot line versus a property line, property line actually has a house on it.
Yeah, so we have an approved subdivision, if we have an approved subdivision plan in. Yeah, so we have an approved subdivision, if we have an approved subdivision plan in place, but the developer has not yet.
Put a house on it.
Actually deeded off that separate, those separate lots to individual property owners.
Okay, hold on, I, I need to read that then. Okay, so then in that case, then if I'm a current resident, the way I read this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm a current resident, you can, you will not be less than 250 feet from my property line. But if I'm in a, have a housing plan that hasn't been developed yet, that new housing plan that's just moving into this township, that lot line gets to be 1,000 feet. Am I reading that correctly? Lot line versus property line, is that correct? Because it says that the edge of the well pad shall be located not less than 1,000 feet from a protected structure. So if I'm living in my house on my property, I would be considered a protected structure. And then it says, and not less than 250 feet from the nearest property line. So it would be, I'm a protected structure, it would be 1,000 feet from my house, but 250 feet from my property line, is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
That's the way I understand it, yeah.
So then the end of that sentence says, but it's not less than 1,000 feet from the nearest lot line. So that's saying that a new housing plan that comes in because they haven't deeded that piece of property yet, that new property owner in the future would have the ability to be 1,000 feet, they would have to be 1,000 feet, or no?
No.
What does that mean then?
It's 1,000 feet from the lot line for the, for the approved subdivision plan, so.
So you're saying the whole thing, no?
No, it's still the individual lots. You, you, your initial thinking is correct, so if, if you look at something outside of a, something that's already established with a home on it.
Yes.
We know where the house is.
Yes.
Sorry, we would know where the house is located on that lot.
Okay.
So they're saying 250 from the property line, 1,000 feet from the protected structure. When you have an approved subdivision plan, but the plan has not yet actually been physically built, we don't have a house, a protected structure. So they're, so they're giving a little extra buffer there, 1,000 feet sort of from the protected structure cause no structure exists yet. It's 1,000 feet from the lot line. Once the lot is developed and the house is on it, then it would revert to, once that plan is developed out, then it would revert back to the, um, 250 and 1,000.
Okay, but then what I don't understand about that is, if you have a pro, if you have a housing plan that's being developed and you have a particular lot, they have setbacks, they have to be 30 feet from the front, from the front row, you know, front setback, 10 feet from each side, and I think it's 25 or something from the back. So technically, they would know where that house is going.
If you're on a, if you're on a lot that is that small, but I, you could also build a subdivision with one acre lots, and somebody could build.
They could, but we don't have that in our.
I, I under. I understand, but at the end of the day, the, you're right. Theoretically, they could've said, you know, instead of 1,000 feet from the nearest lot line, they could've said 970 feet.
Okay.
You know, and, and, but.
I was just taking the lot line to be like they had already come in and like laid out the property, so you knew that that, that that back line was their property line. That's, that's what I was, how I was reading it, okay. So, thank you for that.
Yep.
Um, my next question is, it seems to me that we are not requiring the same amount in insurance that we did before that, like Elizabeth Cowden really, really, really insisted that we had. Um, I could be wrong in reading this, but it went down to, uh, it's $2 million and then an umbrella policy, but that's not what the original one was. One was 10 million, one was 1 million, and one was 5 million.
Where, yeah.
Okay, it is on 11.
I was almost there.
Geophysical exploration, number five.
Not listed to me.
And if I'm correct, I believe we're comparing it to the nine of 2011 ordinance that we're actually working with originally, that we're changing.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, I'm so confused at this point about what we're changing and where, I don't know. But anyway, in that ordinance, it states um, that commercial personal injury and general liability in amounts of less, not less than 1 million. Now it says 2 million, which I understand with inflation, I would assume it to be 2 million. The next one, it says, um, 10 million per occurrence. Is in the original, that's not listed in here. And then it says a $5 million property damage, which I would assume is the fourth hundred, $4 million in this one. I don't under, I don't know, I'm not an expert in that, I'm just bringing that to your attention.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to you here. Cause we have the red line copy as well that we can refer back to. Or blue line on this particular one. Jack, are you able to bring up the current ordinance on our screens? Cause it doesn't, um, it's not line for line from the old ordinance, you have it?
Find insurance and indemnity. I have 15911 is where I'm at. In E code.
You say you want an E code?
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
I mean, that's, that's where I looked initially just now, just to verify what changes were in the insurance months.
And I could be wrong, but, um, this is insurance specific, specific to the geophysical explorations. This is just.
So that's not the same insurance?
It's, it looks like, from what I was reading and from what I understood, that this insurance that's listed is for the testing, the exploration to figure out where, um, oil and gas development could be possible.
Okay.
Or feasible, um, and not for the construction of the well pad. That is separate insurance.
Okay.
Once conditional use is approved.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I think if you go to 22 on the proposed ordinance.
Okay, I see it now, yeah.
It does say, uh, general liability in amounts not less than 25 million per occurrence.
Okay, thank you. Now, um, the other one I had was, just one last question. Okay, on, um, 19, under noise, dust, vibration, and odors.
Yes.
Um, under letter B as in boy. I have no idea what this was. So I looked up this Integrational Standards Organization operating theater velocity limit. I literally Googled those exact words. It led me to numerous citations dealing with the HVAC in operating rooms for hospitals. I don't know if I didn't look the right place, but when I put those exact words in, that's what that was. And it talked about what the standards were of how much noise could be in an operating room in a hospital. I don't know if any of you are familiar with what that is or what, but I think we need to understand what that is. And I, I, as you guys as a recommending body, I think there should be some explanations to you guys about what is in here that is obviously coming from perceived experts that the public has never had a chance to talk to or listen to. I believe that you guys have an oper, you should be informed about what these things are because I don't know any, I mean, I, when it said operating theater velocity, I actually thought it meant a theater. And then when I got on there and it had nothing to do with a theater, and it was about a hospital operating room for the HVAC, then I was really thrown. I, I, I just believe that you guys should be given the information about what these things say before you can ever make a recommendation of whether or not this township should be voting for this or not voting for this. I also would like to know, do we, the, the other comment that I had, the concern that I had was about, um, the number of ordinances that have been out there. At this point, I have no idea what number we're on. The comments are being made that if we have a hearing on September 4th and this one doesn't get passed, from what I gleaned that was on social media, it was stated that there were several ordinances, it was gonna be summarized before the hearing about what all these ordinances were, and if this one doesn't get passed, another one will. I took that to mean, and I could be wrong, that another one was going to be passed at that September 4th hearing. Now, I could be wrong, but that's what I gleaned from the information that was on. I have concerns about that. I don't think, I don't understand how you guys would know what was going on because those of us who have attended meetings and these hearings have no clue what's going on. We have had, we have had ordinances that you guys didn't even get to review, that we've come to meetings to see about what you guys were gonna discuss about because quite frankly, this is a very nice board to discuss stuff with. It all, it doesn't work like way in every other board, and it's unfortunate that it doesn't. But we come to these meetings, you guys didn't even have the ordinances, or you don't get them before you're, before you even have an ability to recommend it. There should be no vote taken on this before you guys have your eyes on it. That's what your job is. They are, they are trusting you to put your eyes on this ordinance before it gets passed. And to say that you guys have this tonight and then, I'm sure none of you know what that operating, operator, theater, whatever, velocity thing has to do with, how can you possibly, how can you possibly recommend it? And if they vote on it without you recommending it, shame on them. Because they're being disrespectful to the five of you that are on this board. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, as a follow-up, I had been thinking about this earlier. Given that there is a hearing on September 4th, will be, will there be an opportunity for the planning commission to make either a recommendation or no recommendation to the draft before there's a vote on it? We need to know that tonight.
Yeah, I, I think, um, the last round of questions to the solicitor, which I also followed up and said, okay, um, since you're 45 days, the planning commission's 45 days ends on September 4th. Anything after tonight, how are they gonna submit, uh, you know, any recommendations? And basically, it was you can submit them up, up to the 4th for consideration, right? Individually or collectively. So everything that you have, uh, provided thus far has been, uh, sent to them for, uh, consideration. So there's not, no, no lack or lax in the presentation of your recommendations or comments.
No, I understand that, but that's different than us as a board saying, as any other business, either like we, we say you should move this forward or you shouldn't, but maybe the supervisors are not looking for that.
So, uh, uh, Jack, if you don't mind, my thoughts for tonight were that, you know, we're gonna discuss this, and I think there are a number of items on here that we have consensus on, or at least majority consensus on. And I, and what I would like to do is, you know, if we can get a hand, get the majority of those ideas together and give a majority consensus, uh, vote on those, uh, for recommended, recommendation for, to accept, you know, those changes, those proposed parts of the ordinance as is, or we have recommended changes or things we want them to consider. I would like to do, I think that gives the most weight, the five, the five of us voting together and giving a majority vote. Uh, I understand that there's gonna be some things that we're not gonna be able to agree on, even if we can get a 3-2 vote on, um, you know, and so at that point, you know, to Jack's point and to Gretchen's point is, I think, you know, if there's items on here that we don't vote on, uh, in, in agreement on, but that you have a strong opinion on, then by all means, I think you should put those in writing and transmit those as an individual member of the commission over to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration.
No, I'd recommend you send to the Chair of the Board of Supervisors for consideration. CC me on it because I'm accumulating all comments, uh, on any aspect of this uh, into one document with table of contents, so. Um, as I mentioned to Lauren in the conversation, uh, his comments are there. Yours will be there, if you have additional comments, uh, then we made part of that document as well.
Well, just so I, we're crystal clear because a supervisor had sent out an email saying that all comments must be made in the public hearing, not submitted to, um, just submitted like to the supervisor separately.
What that email was in reference to was an email that I had sent, was also something that I'd said a couple months ago. Uh, you know, we're subject to the Sunshine Act. Our deliberations need to be public. If you, if you have individual opinions, like I say, if you wanna send an email to the group, we get documents, we review them, some, Lauren's great for this, she'll, she'll put out his, he'll read over things, he'll put out, um, you know, very detailed notes on his thoughts on these things. They're not there for us to discuss. He's sharing them by email ahead of time so that we can read them and we can process them, but then he's also going to come into the meeting and make this part of the public record so that we can discuss them openly and publicly as we should. So I think that email was simply just a reminder that, um, hey, let's not, let's not let that email div, you know, dive into a discussion, we don't want that. So that was just a real quick, hey, hold up, thanks for the comment, but, you know, let's save it for that conversation for the meeting. Now, if you have, but you're also a citizen, so if you wanna send a, a letter with your thoughts over as an individual, uh.
Well, yeah, but that would be different than as part of the planning commission. So I just wanna make clear that anything that we decide, make recommendations is just done tonight before the next vote.
And you have, according to our solicitor, you have until September 4th as a board to make any recommendations.
But we can't, to her point, if we're gonna make recommendations as a commission, they need to be made tonight, cause we don't have another public meeting before that point. So anything we don't say tonight is a, that we don't vote on, agree on as a commission to forward as a recommendation, then at that point, it becomes individual recommendations.
It's clear now.
I mean, that was, that was the sole purpose of, of the email that I forwarded to, to the solicitor and CC'd everybody on it, asking that specific point.
Right.
You know, what happens after tonight? You know, so.
And, and she was right, we have until that date, but we'd have to, I mean, theoretically.
As a board, right?
Right, theoretically, I mean, we could request an additional meeting.
You could, I mean, and then what we'd have to do is we'd have to advertise it, right? And, um, you know, hold it and, you know, as a, as an additional meeting, so. I mean, just keep that in mind, if you do wanna have another meeting before September 4th, give me, give me some time to.
Or even after, right?
Uh, I mean, it could be after, but I don't know what purpose after would.
There would be no vote on the ordinance on the 4th.
Well.
It wouldn't be until the next township meeting.
September 4th, September 4th is a Wednesday, right? The Board of Supervisors meeting is gonna be September 3rd, Tuesday, because Monday we're closed for the holiday. Right, September 4th, there will be a hearing at 6:00 PM. It's gonna go as long as it goes, there's a special meeting, meeting immediately following.
Yeah.
And which points the board will vote on, uh, that ordinance.
Yeah, so I, I mean.
It has to be before.
It has to be before. But I, I think that, you know, over the last few meetings and, and, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, I, I'm forget. I'm sorry? Candy? Thank you. Uh, to your point, uh, yeah, we haven't always had these ordinances, you know, we've had ordinances proposed, we've had, you know, rescinded. There's proposed ordinance rescinded before our meetings. But I think, and we talked about this at last month's meeting, it's, it's been a process, it's been a progression. And it hasn't necessarily always been a, an easy or a clean or a smooth process, but I think as a commission, we see where the thing, where things have been moving towards. We've seen all the proposed, even the ones that have been rescinded. And so we have ideas ourselves as a commission on what we think would work, what we'd like to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, and that's our hope for tonight. to recommend to the Board of Supervisors. And that's our hope for tonight, is to make those recommendations. At least, it's my, my hope, and I think what we discussed in last month's meeting is all of our hope.
If I could call your attention to the screen up there, this is where on our website you will find the most recent, the clean copies that's dated July 17th of the ordinance. There's the ad that's going to run in the Observer Reporter, that's going to run on August 21st, and again on the 29th, I believe. Then, the map that I just pulled up, it, it's out there as well. This actually is in association with the public review opportunity, that this is also at the Observer Reporter, as well as the, right out here in the reception area. So, this is available for public review. We've taken the additional step to post it on the website, so it is available.
To follow up on what you said, my question is, is this ordinance that he just put up there was dated July, I believe, 17th. This map was dated July 9th. Did you guys have it since then, or did you just receive it? I mean, have you had it? My question is, is have you had it in enough time prior to this meeting that you could actually vote on it? Or, my opinion is, as a public member, I, it's my opinion that this hearing should not have been scheduled for September 4th, and denying you guys the opportunity to make recommendations as a full board, not individually, or not on what, whatever you can, whatever your consensus is tonight. You guys should have been given the whole opportunity, if it took you a month to review this, or two months to review this. You guys should have had an opportunity to review this entire ordinance, sit down with a map, have it in the public, have the public here to give you opinions, and then make it. They did not need to schedule this on September 4th, if that was the 45-day deadline that negated your ability to make recommendations as a planning commission. And that's where I find the problem. This, that, that, that public hearing could have been scheduled at the end of September to afford you guys the opportunity that you're supposed to be allowed to have. I mean, you're, you're the rest of our eyes on this project. That's what the whole purpose of a planning commission is, to make sure that there's 10 set of eyes on this, that they're overlooking or they're not thinking of. Because I'm sure each one of you are in a different field, each one of you all have your own individual knowledge, may have gas knowledge, may not have gas knowledge, but that's why you're here. And I believe, and I think it's an offense to you guys, that they scheduled a public hearing on a day where you do not have the full opportunity given to you to review this plan like you do a housing plan, or you do a subdivision. I just don't think that that's right. I mean, you're welcome to do whatever you choose to do. That's just how I feel about it. I think you guys should have been afforded the opportunity, and if a public member came in here and asked you what that velocity thing meant, you might have had the opportunity to have that cross your own mind and be able to contact one of their experts, or the solicitor, or somebody, whoever you would contact, to, to gain that knowledge, so that if somebody came in here and asked you, hey, can you help me out? Do you understand this? Or, you know, whatever, you would have that opportunity. That's where my, that's where my problem comes. But, I mean, I'm not like criticizing you. You do whatever you need to do, but I mean, that's just how I feel about it. I think that that's why you're here. You're here to protect the public, you're here to, like, explain things, you know, put all your heads together, and be more eyes on, on a ordinance. That's, this is a dramatic change. This affects a lot of people. This affects landowners that have been in this township for hundreds of years. I don't know how much they've had input in. I wasn't involved in it. I don't live on it. I live on a postage stamp. You know what? But, I believe in, in landowners' rights. And I have no idea how much input they've had or not had. And I just think that that's where you guys come in to try to help, you know, maybe meet in the middle somewhere. Thanks.
To your, to your point, Candy, to, to your point, we had this proposed ordinance for last month's meeting, so we've had it for a full month plus now. I think the actual, the map is pretty much the same, it is the same map, they added the purple lines since, since the last month, but that's immaterial to, to the overall.
The one thing that we have asked for, and that I'm still confused on, and when we talk amongst ourselves, we, we have asked for the noise expert to come in and present to us and explain some of this. I, I'm still not confident in some of the recommendations myself. I still think that'd be helpful. I still am uncomfortable on whether or not this actually solves the residents' problems based on what we see, DBC, DBA. I've done a lot of Googling myself, but that was one of the things, when we first saw the first version of the ordinance, we did ask formally to have that noise expert come and present to us.
We did. Yeah, we did. And, you know, and you and I have talked back and forth about DBA, DBC. Me personally, and I'm not part of it, I'm comfortable with it. It's an established, it's an established standard as far as measurement. It's, 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 what's the word? It's quantifiable, and it's measurable. So, and it's in line with, you know, other requirements that we've placed before, where, you know, we limit the noise that can, how much noise can travel beyond the property line. So, me personally, I'm okay with that one. But to the physical vibration one, I mean, it's, the whole, I mean, it's even a typo. It says integrational standards. It should say international standards organization, ISO. I'm not personally familiar with the entire ISO standard, but you're right, operating theater refers to the, the operating, an operating room, and I don't know that that is the right standard. I, I don't have a problem with the overall concept of, of limiting physical vibration that extends from an operation on a piece of property that extends beyond the property line. But I don't know that that's the right measurement. That's the right standard to be, help me out with my words here. That's the right standard to be referencing, and the right measurement to be used in order to achieve that. So, that was actually something that I was going to recommend tonight, was that, you know, if the Board of Supervisors does wish to put a limit on vibrations, that they make sure that they've done their due diligence to ensure that that's the proper standard to reference. Because I don't, I don't know enough about it that it is. So, thank you.
I'd like to build on something that Candy said, and it's not for your meeting, it's for the public meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Deborah Lee, 1411 Lexington Drive in Georgetown Estates in Lawrence. So, the public meeting is being held at 6 o'clock on September 4th, and the vote is being held immediately thereafter. My question is, how does that happen and have those public comments integrated into their thinking, even considered in their thinking? So, I think that's rhetorical. I don't get it, but I wasn't even going to bring that one up to you guys. I didn't realize that you didn't have the ordinance. So, two questions. The easier of which, Jack, could you bring the map back up, please? Has to do with oil and gas development facilities as opposed to well pads. So, the ordinance, I think it's 61, 24061, refers to oil and gas development facilities, and they specify that as being compressor stations and processing plants. I don't know if they're limited to that, but those are the, those are the two that I'm interested in as well. The ordinance infers that those facilities are also going to be limited to the area designated on the overlay, but I don't understand how to anchor that with what I see. So, I see the seven well pads, five of which are, are already in progress or about to be. But I don't understand where you are allowing the, the compressor stations and/or processing stations. Can you guys answer that? Do you guys know?
So, to be transparent, I have, I'm a stay-at-home mom now, and I have been, thankfully, for years. But, in my past life, I did work for a midstream company, and so I am quite familiar with compressor stations and processing plants. With what you're saying, I have a similar question when I was looking at this map, particularly because in the wording of the ordinance, there's also discussion of an overlay map. And overlay versus these smaller parcels, or these smaller notations, was confusing to me as well, because it doesn't look to me like there could feasibly be a compressor station or a processing plant at any of those locations. And there is a, there is language.
And why does that, may I ask? Why would it not be feasible?
Size-wise, it doesn't look like, and I could be wrong. I could be very wrong. But the, the other thing that sticks out to me is that as, even on this map, it's saying for oil and gas exploration, not for oil and gas facilities, that, that that's what those spots are for. An exploration versus a compressor station or a processing facility are two different things.
Right, understood. But the ordinance talks to development facilities being part of the same areas identified on the overlay. And what I take, I take this to be the overlay map, meaning it overlays the zoning in, in.
The setback zoning, you mean? Pardon me? Do you mean the setbacks? Or do you mean the zoning?
No, no. And, and in fact, if I'm wrong, I would love to know, because I've been laboring under this misconception, if it's that, for a couple of years. Overlay, I consider this whole entire map that we're looking at, Exhibit A in the ordinance, to be the overlay map. And what it's laying over are the regular zones in Cecil Township. Is, is that correct or not correct?
That's correct.
Oh, thanks. Okay, good. Yeah. So, the ordinance speaks to the overlay areas where the well pads are situated as, as being subject to the same kinds of rules and regulations as, as the, the well pads. So, my question is, are we talking about around the Augustine well, there's a, there's, I don't know, a mile or a half-mile diameter where a well, a compressor station or gas processing plant could be? I want to know how to predict where you guys and industry are planning on putting these development facilities. That's really what I'm after. And it's not on these maps, although it is inferred in the ordinances.
Are you asking, and I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're asking, so that I can help answer it hopefully. Are you asking to predict where such oil and gas facilities could be placed, or are intended to be placed?
Both.
Okay. As far as intended, I can't speak for every operator. I can only speak from my experience, but a lot of that is dictated by where there are well sites, and how.
So, so, thank you. Can you stop there?
Sure.
So, we're looking at well sites?
Yes.
Okay. So, tell me what industry is looking at to locate a Mark West compressor station or a, or a gas processing plant, if they're looking at the Augustine well pad. What are they looking at? What criteria are they looking for to say this would be a?
They're also looking at how much gas is coming from any one well, the production, where the production is going to be, where the production is in surrounding wells, and the volume that would be moved through pipeline. And when they're doing that, they're doing so to say, hey, what is the way that we can situate a facility to have the least amount of impact overall above ground? And to have the most reasonable right-of-way acquisitions and permissions from landowners along a pipeline route, because they can't put a pipeline anywhere in the ground that a landowner doesn't approve of with mineral rights. They can't do that, or with surface rights, either way. So, they're looking at all of that. They're not just looking at, oh, there's three well sites potentially right here. So, it would make sense to put this here. They don't know what the volume of that is going to be, and they're going to work with producers to find out, hey, here's an estimate of what this is going to be. Here's what we would need to make that transportable.
Okay. So, is the ordinance then implying, is it saying, because this is how I'm reading it, that the facilities, development facilities as opposed to well pads, are governed by the same setback requirements as the well pads? Because when setbacks are talked about, it only talks about well pads, until you get to the part about, talking about development facilities.
I have that exact note as well. So, I, I was wondering, as far as, when we're talking about setbacks, when we're talking about a lot of things throughout this ordinance, it's specifically referencing a well pad or a well site, and it's not referencing oil and gas facilities. And, so I have the same question as you. And if anybody else doesn't have that question, or couldn't enlighten me on some clarity on that, I would appreciate, but I have that same question, where it seems that they would be governed by the same setbacks and regulations and rules and ordinance as the well pads, but it doesn't call out specifically facilities.
I, I have the same question. I think it's, it's vague, and it's hard, it's up for interpretation. It could be implied that they have the same setbacks, but then you could read it another way, and it could just be for well pads. It's, it's, it's vague. It's up for interpretation. It's not clear.
Well, Matt, are you not considering the gas system facility? Like a compressor station, is not considered a gas system facility, gathering system facility?
A compressor station is considered a gathering system facility.
That's considered gathering.
That's because they're gathering? Well, under oil and gas development facilities under A, it says, including horizontal drilling facilities, gathering system facilities, and productive facilities. And then it says, three, shall be located not less than 1,000 feet from any protected structure. So, to me, that looks like it's the same.
It is. It's listed as the same setbacks there, but in the rest of the ordinance, it's labeled an oil and gas ordinance, but in the rest of the ordinance, it's referencing well pad. It only references the facilities or gathering systems, it seems, in this.
In that section?
Yes. In that section. Yes, it is. So, it is, it is listed there as that, for the same setbacks. However, what you're saying is something that I was thinking of as I was reading through it, wondering why there are so many things that are only referencing a well pad or a well site, and not the facilities that are often working in conjunction with well pads and well sites.
So, is that the kind of question that you will formally present to the Board of Supervisors and expect a response? Or?
So, that's a, that's a two-part question. I, I think that, yes, it is something we'll, I, I think a number of us have that same question, that we're going to, so that is likely a question that, you know, we're going to, it's definitely a question we're definitely going to discuss, about whether or not we're going to forward that on to the Board of Supervisors, whether or not we can, or we should, or can expect a formal response from them. I, I think historically speaking, once we make our recommendations, the formal responses, we see what they approve.
Okay. Okay. So, that really leads to my second question, which is, I really, we really don't understand what the role of the Planning Commission is with regard to making recommendations to the board. So, if we use oil and gas as an example, my question to you is, what are the criteria and the priorities that you guys use when you are evaluating an ordinance and making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors? And the other part of that question is, are your recommendations made public? So, yours had is not, and yes, they are?
I mean, the second, to answer the second part of the question, absolutely, our recommendations are always public. They're made in these meetings. It's the only place we make recommendations.
Okay, good. All right, good.
And just, and just like the supervisor meetings, our meetings are live and they're recorded, so even if you're not able to join us anytime that you'd like, you can always watch and see, and you're always welcome, always welcome to email the township. Always welcome to email the township if you have any questions, if you weren't able to be here-
Okay.
-to follow up.
Cool. So, I'm sorry. So, you're gonna discuss some of the things we talked about tonight, and put together a collective or collective and individual responses to the Board, right? since we will all have gone home by then, how do, how do we know what you're recommending to the Board?
Everything that we would recommend tonight, we would be discussing here publicly, recorded. And anything that we would state to say that we wanted to forward to the supervisors would also be on record.
Okay. It's just good to know that there's more than five people looking at this in the township. Okay. So, back to my question, which is sort of conceptual, but I do want to understand what your role is. So, when you are looking at something like, let's say, the oil and gas ordinances and, and that map, which will affect people, many, many people for decades and decades, tell me what your criteria is. What are you, what, do you guys have a checklist? Are you looking at the 2023 Township Plan? Are you looking at the whereas clause that's in every ordinance that says you guys are here to protect the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Cecil Township? What is it that you're, what's your benchmark? Where, where are you starting and how are you making those recommendations?
Well, the, the short answer to that is all the above. It, it really is. You know, we're looking at, we're looking at ordinances, right? We, we work together, the Township Engineer, sometimes the Township Fire Marshal, may sometimes a solicitor will have input on these things as well. And we're looking at, does, what somebody's proposing to do, is it, is it, I always struggle looking for, in line, yeah, is it a, you know, in agreement with the, the ordinances that are currently in place, the Township Comprehensive Plan, you know, and, and, you know, and I guess at some level, there's a little bit of, you know, we, we try to apply a little bit of, you know, our own, put our backgrounds and our knowledge together to say, does this make sense as well? I mean, sometimes something doesn't make sense, but legally, you're allowed to do it. And so that's, you know, that's, the recommendation goes forward, and it's, they've met the standard. You know, and sometimes, you know, we look at it and say, you know, we agree with what you're trying to do, but unfortunately, it's, you know, you're trying to put a square pagan around hole. While we agree that somebody should recut that hole to be a square, today it's a, today it's a circle, it's a round hole. And so, unfortunately, we're gonna have to recommend that to not be, you know, to the Board of Supervisors to not approve that. You know, but the main things we're looking at are Township ordinances and the Comprehensive Plan. Those are probably our two most important guiding documents. I know the Township Engineer and our solicitors, they go a lot further reaching than us, though. They start diving into, you know, highway occupancy permits, and, um, which gets referenced in the ordinances, and the requirements for county and state permits as well, which again, all gets referenced in our ordinances, but, you know, we, we count on our, our subject matter experts for those, for those matters.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. Does the, does the whole idea of the reason you're here, which is the protection of health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Cecil Township, is that ever on your checklist?
Absolutely.
That's also part of the Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
So that is, you ask yourselves that when you're making recommendations, is that right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's all I needed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Any comments or questions? To my fellow commission members, so, how do we want to do this? Do we want to work through it from beginning to end, or does somebody want to start up a list? And we can discuss item by item?
I wasn't gonna go through all the written comments that I shared, but really just hit the highlights of what I wanted to throw out there on the record, and, if, if, if that's, that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. And the Township has these already, correct? And you have, what, seven or eight pages of comments?
I was planning on sharing them this evening.
Okay, to make it public record?
Yes, yes. I'm gonna leave the map for last, because I'm sure we'll talk about the map enough. So I think the, the hours of operation restrictions specifically during drilling and completions is a, is a big concern for me. I, I, it's a safety concern, you know, as an engineer, with knowledge of the oil and gas industry. For all transparency, I, I do work for the Marcellus Shale Coalition. I'm a civil engineer with a technical background in permitting both at the state and federal level for this industry. I've done it for almost 20 years. Stopping and starting of both drilling and completions operations presents safety issues with respect to well caving, if you were to stop in the middle. And then during completions operations or hydraulic fracturing might present risks as far as blowouts go. Without, you know, going straight through to completion, well drilling and hydraulic fracturing could, could take three to four times as long as far as the entirety of the operation. So I have, I have significant concern about those, specifically just to drilling and completions, not necessarily the construction of the well pad and other normal construction operations. There is a section in the ordinance that states that the operators have a two-year window to develop or construct the well pad underneath a grading permit. State of Pennsylvania allows for, with their Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan General Permit, up to five years to construct that well pad. So that, that could, that's a significant conflict in the amount of time that a company has the ability to construct a well pad. And in some cases, because of the level of state permitting that's necessary, depending on what your well pad is, it takes more than two years to line up all your permits before you can get out there and construct a well pad. The, the, the term school is not adequately defined. I have concerns about that, on what that means related to the 2,500-foot setback, is that at the property line? Is that any property that the school owns? I, I'd like that to be a firm definition somewhere. And then, other than the map, last but not least, I think the, the definition of proposed structure is open to a variety of different interpretations, especially the phrase, "or other public or private building use for, for similar uses." It, it just seems with this definition, a protected structure could, could include any necess- any accessory structures like sheds or barns. And if these are to be included in the 1,000-foot setback within the map, it would further reduce the areas where oil and gas development could occur in the township. I'll leave the map for, you know, us to discuss later. But those are my, my highlights as far as my concerns go.
So your list of comments, are we sending these to the Township as a Planning Commission? Were these going solely on your behalf, and, and we're sending our own collective comments?
If, if-
Those are the two choices, I guess, right? Yes, yes. If we all sign off on-
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we all-
The extensive list.
If we vote to forward his list as a-
There's a lot of comments.
If we get a majority vote that, that we agree with that, then, yeah, we could.
Yes, okay. Just clarifying.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
When we look in E-code and definitions, by the way, for school, there are two different types. There's primary or secondary, and trader business. And while it appears from the maps and from the distances that have been shown on the maps, that it is focused on primary or secondary, because the definition isn't clearly defined for this ordinance. It, it is just too open to interpretation, because trader business has a, has an extensive list of things that could be considered a school.
Actually, that was one of my primary concerns, and Lauren and, and Christie as well was concerned about that. The definition, I, I have submitted multiple times suggestions to the, to council that, that we define schools. It's, it's too nebulous to have that, especially with, with regard to setbacks on the map. And as, as Christie pointed out, there are actually two defined terms in, in the zoning ordinance already, which it, it's pretty obvious that we're not looking at trade schools and such, but, but you can't just have a small S and have schools and not have that defined in, in this specific ordinance. That's critical, and it's not been addressed yet.
I, I mean, I think we've all, I think every one of us have brought that up multiple times, so, I mean, I feel pretty confident if we send any comments to the Board of Supervisors, schools is gonna be, defining schools is gonna be one that's gonna be on there. And, and I'm with, I'm with, Lauren, I'm with you on a protected structure. Actually, it, it, my biggest, I mean, you bring up a good point when it talks, you know, when there's potential for it to include accessory structures. I look at it, I look at the word in there, in the definition, occupied. You know, how do we define occupied? You know, it, you know, is it, you know, and, you know, I have, you know, I built my house here, I mean, now, what, I think, 14, 15, maybe 16 years ago now, and I have an occupancy permit. I, we had to, you had to get an occupancy permit for, for the house. So, but you can't use the, the existence of an occupancy permit to define an occupied structure, because there are houses built prior to that ordinance being put in place, and the original owner still owns it, or whoever currently owns it owned it before an occupancy permit was required. So, not every occupied structure in the township has an occupancy permit. So, when is, when is a structure occupied, when isn't it occupied? How long does it have to be unoccupied to not be considered occupied any longer?
Those are great questions. The thing I would refer back to is within the 2012 Oil and Gas Act that the state passed, that has a definition for an occupied structure as it relates to the 500-foot setback. We might consider proposing that.
So, even if we want to change the setback, we can still at least reference-
Occupied structure.
The definition of occupied structure, and I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, you and I have agreed on that many times, where if we can go back to established-
Definitions.
Definitions, fantastic.
And you make, raise a good point. There are a lot of the definitions, and we've had this discussion, that, that are very open and vague, like best management practices, like critical impact areas. I mean, there's, there are established definitions-
Industry standards.
-that could be used as a resource.
And I, and I'd like to use those definitions as much as possible.
Absolutely.
As we're speaking about definitions, one of the things that first popped out to me as I was reading about the ambient noise level, I know we have all expressed that we would like to have a better understanding beyond what we have Googled on our own, but one of the things that I, I was trying to wrap my head about, around was for the ambient noise level to be taken, it's then adjusted to eliminate any noise associated with existing developments or facilities. And I just didn't know. And I would, that would be one thing that I would be very curious to ask the noise expert, or experts, is how do you eliminate that specific of a noise? To say that that specific noise, and that noise alone, is contributing however many decibels, whether it is DBA or DBC? I, I don't know.
So my understa-, my, my understanding from that is that you, the only way to do that is to conduct a baseline?
Well, they're, and it's saying with the baseline. It's, "The all-encompassing noise level associated with a given environment being a composite of sounds from all sources at the location, constituting the normal or existing level of environmental noise at a given location without extreme atmospheric conditions, such as winds greater than 3 meters per second or precipitation, and then adjusted to eliminate any noise associated with existing developments or facilities." So it's talking about the noise, the ambient noise level with a baseline, but it's saying the baseline isn't, is going to eliminate any noise associated with existing developments or facilities?
Or unusual noise? Would make sense, right, to-
Is that, yeah, and I-
It doesn't say that, but that would make sense.
I just don't understand that sentence.
So, as I read it, and, and as I'm understanding is that you do the baseline before you start your oil and gas development. So if there is something already on the property making noise, now your baseline's going to determine what that noise is, and then, and then you're able to say, okay, if this noise was already creating, you know, a, a noise at the property line of this decibel level, then that gives, then we can eliminate that sound out and say that now the noise level at the, at this point on the property line should not exceed this number, this new number based off of additional noise created by the development added on to the noise that was there prior to the development, is that?
That makes sense. That's not what I understood from reading this.
That's how I understood it from reading it.
I, I, I kind of agree with Christie there. That's the way that I read it. It seemed like they were eliminating all of the background noise to get to the background. The other thing that did make a whole lot of sense to me, and I had to do a conversion, because I'm a dork, is 3 meters per second, that's 6 miles an hour as far as wind goes. That's, that's not, that's not realistic. You, you could be standing outside, and there'd be no wind, and it could be greater than 3, 3 meters per second, 6 miles an hour. But, I don't know. I don't know if it matters, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a pretty low number, so, so really, you're just taking any wind noise out of the equation at all.
But it's always gonna be, there's always gonna be, I mean, 6 miles an hour is nothing. That's, and I don't know if that's an accepted practice. I, I guess I just, it's so specific, I just, I don't know. And, and Jason, I'm, I'm not trying to be silly about it, but I just-
No, 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 I understand.
Is it, is it usually 10, or is it 20? I mean, 6 sounds so low and so specific.
Yeah, the way I read it was that it's, we're just eliminating, we're, we're ensuring that wind noise is taken, any wind noise whatsoever is taken out of the equation. That's how I read it.
But, and that would be good if you're in a laboratory, but we're outside. Yeah.
So I, there are, there are scales, and I can't point to them. I, I know I've seen them in, in my past readings, that there are scales for wind speed and, and noise generated-
Right.
-on the scale. So, when, at the time of measurement, so what that allows them to do is, if, on the date that they go out to test, the noise that's coming from a development facility, if there's a, they have to have a manometer and measure the wind speed that, at that point as well. And if it's a 10 mile per hour wind, then they know that that 10 mile per hour wind is gonna generate this much noise, so they subtract that off of the sound reading they're getting. So you're getting the benefit of the noise, the wind, in, in the calculation.
Yeah, and, and again, I could, I could be reading it wrong as well, but it just, that last part says, "and then adjusted to eliminate any noise associated with existing developments or facilities." It sounds, it sounds like that, that they're eliminating the background. And, and, and again, it's, it's a lot there in that paragraph to unpack.
Yeah, again, I read it the same way. So, they're setting, they, they establish what the ambient noise level is, so that whenever they do the future noise testing to determine if the development, oil and gas development is in compliance, then they can subtract off from the noise associated with existing developments or facilities that predated the oil and gas development. Again, and that's how I'm reading it, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm giving, maybe I'm giving too much credit here, giving them too much credit on, on my reading of it, but that's how I read it.
So, do we know what the basis of this is? Like, where did this language come from? What standards is it based on? Who, how was this draft put together?
Well, I, I'm always a huge fan of footnotes to reference standards or specific definitions, so I like the idea of foot- So, I like the idea of footnotes. Where did the definition of ambient noise level come from? You know, where did the definition of hydraulic fracturing come from? You know, footnotes are huge help because then you know that it's an established definition that it came from.
I'm with you on that. And even if they say ambient noise level and just say ambient noise level was as defined by in reference back to a standards organization body, I'd be even okay with that. Jack, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Jack, do we, because we have noise ordinances and I just can't remember, cough the top of my head, but I believe we also, that we, I believe we have to adjust when we do noise, if we do noise monitoring at a property line for a noise complaint, that we would adjust for things like wind and other noise in the area, right?
The current noise ordinance really applies to construction only. Dan, to my knowledge, we have not adjusted that or they've considered the noise ordinance, but we've never, we've never done anything, we've never taken a step further, have we?
I don't believe there is a noise ordinance.
Right. The only noise ordinance it is, is for construction and that's 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There's no DBAs, you know, there's no sound, anything built in. It was something that's been considered, but I don't think it's been finalized yet.
I think with that being said and the fact that we don't have anything in ordinance for regular run-of-the-mill operations, not just construction, it's even more important to reference where some of the information definitions, standards came from related to noise, because noise was the primary concern when this whole effort got started.
Just so you know, that's Section 151 of the E code. It was ordinance dated 5/17/2000. So, it was five of 2000 that, basically it's UDO.
Everybody's Googling.
Yeah. That's-
I see all on their phones.
I just, I'm with you. I want to, I can't recall if the, you know, it's not something that we talk about on a regular basis. I don't live in the-
Well, I don't either, but I'm even laughing. I'm going back to the three meters per second is an extreme atmospheric condition is a six mile an hour wind. I just, it continues to kind of crack me up.
Yeah.
I could be wrong, but in my very recent Google search from two minutes ago, there is something on windexchange.energy.gov showing average wind speeds in miles per second. And from what it looks like with Washington County, there are areas where the average wind speed is falling below four and at four average miles per second.
Miles per hour or second?
Well, whatever, miles per hour, sorry.
Miles per second, that'd be pretty, that'd be-
Yeah, that would be a little bit more.
Strong wind.
But it's averaging just under four or four and maybe a little bit about between four and 4.5.
So, maybe six is an extreme atmospheric condition. I was, you know, heard of these winds whipping at 50 miles an hour.
Oh, excuse me, four meters.
Oh, four meters per second?
Yeah, per second, yeah.
Okay, so that would be greater than six miles an hour.
Oh.
Yeah, the average is four meters.
Yeah, I got it up.
You got that up, so now I can go to the link that she's just referencing.
And I'm only referencing this because it's a doc of website.
Yeah, legitimate. Yep, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Yep. And that's to encompass, you know-
Construction activities.
Exactly.
And trash collection.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Right. But there's no metrics to it.
Right.
Yeah.
No DBA, DBC, nothing.
Right, no theater vibrations.
No, I mean, I couldn't even find that.
No, that, I mean, I think we can all agree that that would be the first reference to that anywhere within our ordinances. Actually, scroll back up a moment. Vibration. Can you click on that?
Seven, six, same as-
Those are construction activities.
Right.
Nothing specific though, just the hours and the, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because you look at that ordinance on, I mean, where it states on vibration. I mean, I think that's, you know, looking at the, you know, what's been going on and some of the reasons why we're being asked to look at this. Vibration, you know, has been a big topic for the people who have been impacted by oil and gas development. So, according to this ordinance, you know, they, if someone's, if they're causing vibration, it's going beyond the, essentially beyond the property line. So, it's causing disruption to people beyond, on neighboring properties, then they're in violation of this ordinance as it is listed here.
And that's, that's the argument right now is drilling on somebody else's property. If that sound invades someone else's space, they're in violation. And, I mean, it's a 24/7 operation-
Yeah.
-that, you know, causes noise.
Yes, and the noise ordinance is very, you know, doesn't give, I mean, I kind of like, I've said it before and I'll stick with it, that I like, you know, to make things quantifiable. You know, everybody perceives sounds and noise and vibrations differently. And, you know, what's offensive to one person, you know, may not be offensive to the next person. So, I like quantifiable numbers when it comes to enforcement. And right now, what I see in our ordinances in general is that vibration and noise is not quantified. And so, any complaint against an operator could cause them to be in violation of the ordinance.
Whereas, if it's continuous operations past 6:00 PM or before 7:00 AM.
Right.
Yeah.
Which, you know, you know, we're-
We're talking about the two operations that we'd like to be continuous. The regular run-of-the-mill construction obviously would not.
So, you know, I think it would be, you know, if we're going to recommend that we're going to, you know, if we're going to say to the township, hey, you should consider allowing 24/7 operations, I think it's going to be in everybody's best interest to put a quantifiable number on noise and vibration. I, again, I don't know that the, that ISO standard is the right quantifiable measure for it. But if we don't, then all it takes is anybody who's annoyed by the operation, however slight it might be, to make a complaint and now the operator is in violation. So, establishing a baseline, you know, I, again, I don't know if it's the, if it's the right way to say it, if they're, but establishing a baseline and then giving them permission to go a certain level above baseline, I think is probably the best way to do it to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we're not subject to the whims of somebody who may complain about something that they are particularly, that they feel they are particularly sensitive to.
And you're thinking some decibel level, right? I mean, that's quantifiable.
I mean, when we're talking about noise, I mean, whether we're talking about noise, I mean, vibration, I mean, I, my understanding is that the vibration is, the complaints about vibration are really tied to the lower frequency noise that the, that the DBC scale picks up, that the DBA scale does not pick up. So, I, you know, again, I don't know, but it's possible that by setting the DBC limit that you may address the vibration issue on its own. It may help resolve, you know, one may resolve the other. I'm just speculating on that, of course.
We're not looking at setting a limit. We're recommending they come up with a, a limit to include in the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no, I have no number in mind.
They have it in there, right? I mean, it's-
They have a limit, but they're not allowing for continuous operations for drilling completions.
Right.
They have a limit there with DBC and the duration of the increase between the normal hours of, not normal, but the regular permitted hours of construction. The way that I look at the noise, at the-
No, I think you're right on that.
Yeah.
It was under 19, right?
Yeah. During drilling or hydraulic fracturing activities by more than 10 decibels during the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Which is interesting because it, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM goes beyond the, doesn't that go up?
It was six to seven.
Six to seven.
Yeah.
So, they actually go out to 10. And I actually like, under 19, part E there, the noise provisions, E1 with the ambient noise level baseline. I think they do go, that's where they bring in the C weighted scale, where they reference the C weighted scale. But I think they actually do a nice job of, you know, to what we've talked about, Lauren, of referencing, you know, established standards from recognized standards creating bodies and, you know, even ask for qualifications of the person performing the test. I mean, I, I like that.
Yeah, and so, and, yeah, in that case, they do. And so, they should take it a step further and say that if you go through all of those types of efforts and, and specific to drilling and completions, that continuous operation should be allowed providing that you are able to utilize those qualified professionals and standards.
I'm not opposed to that. I mean, it's, as part of our recommendations. I, I mean, again, it's, you know, it's, I think, you know, there's two sides, you know, it's easy to say there's two sides, but I think there's a lot of middle ground in between. I think that this is a, that if you can do 24/7 operations and keep it within established quantifiable numbers, why not?
Just as a point of clarification, under the definition for natural gas compressor station, it says, "A facility designed and constructed to compress natural gas that originates from oil and gas well or collection of such wells operating as a midstream facility for delivery of oil and gas to a transmission pipeline, distribution pipeline, natural gas processing plant or underground storage field." I just wanted to clarify that a compressor station wouldn't be able to send gas to a transmission or distribution pipeline, to my understanding, as the gas would need processed first before it could be transmitted for commercial or public use.
That's absolutely correct. And another reason that we need to know where these definitions came from and rely on specific adopted or accepted definitions.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's over and above, but I don't think it, in that particular case, I don't think it harms.
It's factually incorrect.
Right. It doesn't harm, but to your point, like, if we're using, if we use established industry definitions, then we don't run into those issues.
Yeah.
It could potentially make sense if the definitions for natural gas compressor station and natural gas processing plant, while they serve two different purposes, were combined. That could be a middle ground.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to go back and read through the whole thing to see if there's a specific part where they separated on, it may not make a difference in a standard if you combine them, or it may. I'd have to go back and reread with that thought in mind, but- That's a good point.
Okay, so as of now, our biggest concern as a commission are the definitions?
I have more.
Right, that's number one. Right, that's number one, right?
I'm just going through from the beginning.
I was going to say, are you continuing or are you stopping?
I'm continuing.
All right, good.
We have one.
Well, the hours of operation.
The hours of, yes.
I think-
Drilling specific operations.
Hydraulic fracturing, yeah.
I would agree with that. That's a safety issue that should continue.
The, and again, I point that out, this out in my comments, the, where the conflict, state and federal regulations, I think we need to be careful. I think, I think I've pointed out a couple of examples already related to the two-year versus the five-year state permit. I think those are challengeable items. You know, if you have a five-year permit at the state level to develop that well pad, the township can't tell you, well, you got to do it in two. You know, so it's those types of things that, you know, I've made comments several times that we need to incorporate by reference the PennDOT roadway pavement thickness and those standards. That's easy to do rather than, you know, specking out, you know, four inches of binder and what have you and gravel.
Right, and I think, you know-
PennDOT really doesn't have specifications. They have paving specifications, but they don't specify thicknesses. All thicknesses would be based on what the road warrants.
Not even with an HOP permit, you'd have to-
I think we talked about this last month, the HOP permit required, that you have to meet their standards so far in and township wanted to go further.
Further, and, yeah, that's fine.
We're all fine with, yeah. But now you're saying there's not a depth requirement on that or?
Well, no, I mean, every road is different. So, thicknesses are not, I mean, PennDOT has specifications on asphalt, what kind of asphalt you can use and-
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to be so prescriptive in the ordinance that you-
Right, but I think the issue has been, and this happens not just with well pads, it happens anywhere where people put stones in and they get kicked on the red.
Oh, yeah, you don't want that.
It's been, I think we adopted that as like a driveway, there's a driveway standard for some.
Yep. I'm sorry, Dave. Go ahead.
So, I'm trying to just get a little bit of a work in list going. I mean, school not adequately defined, I think we're on agreement on. Protected structure not adequately defined.
Particularly regarding occupied. I'm with you on that completely.
Yeah, especially what occupied.
Right.
And then, I think we're on, from what we're seeing, pretty much in agreement that we're recommending that the township utilize existing established definitions from government and industry, industry standard, government and industry standard definitions.
With the addition of footnotes?
Yeah, and noting them, so you know where they came from.
Incorporating definitions via reference.
Yeah.
By reference or reference by footnote.
Footnotes, yeah.
And another part in with protected structure would be where it's saying oil and gas development activities as defined herein generated from drilling or hydraulic fracturing activity at a well site. So, protected structure is only referencing to a well site. It is not referencing oil and gas activities as a whole or oil and gas development facilities as a whole as well. And I think it's important to say, if it's going to be protected structure, that it has to be with all oil and gas development, not just well sites.
I'm still writing one before, so give me a moment. I'm going to ask you to say it one more time. Incorporate established definitions by reference or footnote from recognized government or industry sources. And I think we've had that issue, I have to say, I think that as a commission, I think we've had that issue with definitions on numerous ordinances that get brought behind us. We seem to want to define everything our own way.
Where I can understand there'd be a difficulty in referencing, because if that defining body or literature modified the definition, are we stating that we need to modify the definition in our ordinance as well? are we stating that we need to modify the definition in our ordinance as well?
Well, I, I think that's to his point, like, if, if you wanna, if you wanna get around that, then you just footnote it rather than, rather than incorporate the definition by reference to another standard that may change. You state it as it is and say that we got it from this.
So citing it.
Yeah, cite it, yeah.
Yeah, and it depends on what the definite, the, the term is too, is going to, you know, I mean, some of these are longstanding terms that, you know, that have been accepted for a long time. Others obviously fluctuate throughout time, so.
I mean, this, I mean, this industry is, you know, at, at this point, pretty well established, but it's still.
Pretty mature.
But it, but it's also still in the, in the grand scheme of, of things, still e- evolving. So I can see that on both sides. Um, what was your last one again? Here, so I can write it down. Yeah, it was.
I stated that, um, the definition currently for protected structure, um, is talking about oil and gas development activities generated from drilling or hydraulic fracturing activity at a well site, where it should be referencing all oil and gas development, including facilities. So anything that is referenced in definition should be for all oil and gas development, all oil and gas facilities, and not.
That was setbacks from protected structures.
Um, no, no, it was, uh, including but not limited to, so it was, um, that may be impacted by noise, emissions, light, or other negative attributes of drilling operations, including but not limited to oil and gas development activities as defined here and generated from drilling or hydraulic fracturing activity at a well site. So it's referencing specifically, um, oil and gas activity from a well site, and it is not defining oil and gas activity from any oil and gas facility.
Yeah, she doesn't even apply to the construction of a well pad, I don't think, right?
Uh, noise, noise and light, um, noise and light are often, uh, discussed during the construction phase and in the conditional use portion, um, because that is something that, that comes with construction.
I know, but I'm saying to your point, um, it says impacted by noise emissions, light, or other negative attributes of drilling operations, including but not limited to, and even as it tries to go on, it never mentions, so, so the a protected structure doesn't, there is no such thing as a protected structure during the construction phase.
Well, drilling operations is part of the construction phase.
The establishment of the well pad?
Yeah. Drilling a well is actually constructing the well.
Well, I get, yeah.
It's part of the construction phase.
But there, there's, there's site prep activities, right, before you even get into the drilling?
You build the well pad, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, and so there's no protected structures during that phase. This, this how.
So you're saying it would be better to, to broaden that safer, the entirety of, uh, site development and construction?
Right, right, 'cause that's what you were saying, right? It was that it was very narrow.
Well, I'm saying it's very narrow because it's, because it's only talking about well sites. It's not talking about if there was a compressor station or a natural gas processing plant. And that's one instance, um, in this ordinance.
Yeah.
Definitions or otherwise that references something only at a well site and not oil and gas development as a whole. And, uh, that, that leads to me asking if the ordinance is specifically for well sites with a footnote for oil and gas development facilities, or if it is for all oil and gas development.
So if somebody came in with a compressor station that they wanted to build, based on what's, what the definitions are, they wouldn't have to, um, adhere to the setbacks, the proposed setbacks, is the way that I read it.
Well, that's not the case because there is that part, I think it's thirty-six, way down below where there, there are setbacks. Um, however, when it comes to, um, the potential impact by noise emissions, light, or other negative attributes.
Those are only for well sites.
Those are only for well sites, um, and that.
I see thirty-six now.
So if the, if the intent of the ordinance is for oil and gas development as a whole, I would think we would want to include facilities and the construction of them.
Yeah.
It's certainly not clear, so, but I, I would agree, yeah.
Yeah, thirty-six references protected structure, but protected structure doesn't reference the development facilities.
Not circular.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the circle's not complete. Now, there's more. Do you have some?
No, I was gonna jump ahead to the, the permits.
I was, I was going to go to application fee, if you don't mind, under conditional use.
That's critical. Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Um, the application fee for four thousand dollars, um, it said, uh, shall be paid by the applicant for the purposes of payment for expenses incurred or to be incurred by the township associated with all administration of the application. Fees may be adjusted by the township board of supervisors from time to time by resolution. I think all of that's fine, however, I think a good thing to, um, provide some middle ground as well is to say any of the four thousand dollars that has not been utilized by the township or has not been needed can go into the escrow required as part of conditional use for the, for the, um, grading or for roadwork, whichever.
Should be paid by the applicant for the purpose of payment for expenses incurred or to be incurred.
In the event that four thousand dollars isn't utilized by the township, which they keep copious records of.
Right, 'cause then it leaves it open, you know, yeah.
Otherwise, there's another application fee, right, for the actual development?
Well, no, I think there still needs to be the application fee for the development and for the escrow, but I think, um,
That could roll into the next.
With those escrows, they need to be at a certain dollar amount. They need to maintain that certain dollar amount.
Right.
And, um, to say, hey, this can go towards that, so when it, when they do need to start the, and, uh, I could be wrong. This is just a, a thought of like, hey, this is a, um, a good way to, to utilize and have transparency in that funding for that fee.
Just so you know, the, the grading application is different, though. That, that's a separate application. You know, I mean, you're suggesting one pot for escrow as opposed to?
No, no, not one pot for escrow, like, it, it could go towards something that it requires escrow, whether it be for the grading or for potential road repairs, because those are often part of the conditional use or work in, in tandem with it.
So, I mean, just thinking out loud, 'cause, 'cause you're asking, you're bringing up a point that is something that I've really, have not, never really given much thought to, is, you know, what is the accounting that the township does for the, for the, um, spending of the, those fees?
It's very specific, um, it's handled by one person, and, um, there, there's mandatory escrow on a variety of things, so that's why I say you've got buckets for each, you know, like, your grading permit, uh, that's gonna be different, so. In the construction phase of the well pad, you're gonna have a separate application, uh, for, for the grading.
I, I get the escrow, uh, part of it. I do understand that, but I, I don't, I don't know if, and I know that that's very, every penny's accounted for i- i- in, in escrow, but when it comes to application fees, i- is the, is the township's spending of the fee that was, the money that was obtained through that fee accounted for to that level of detail?
It is, because the escrow would be for like engineering fees or something along those lines. So it's very detailed, um, and when it gets low, a reminder is sent out, uh, but there's receipts for everything that, that, uh, is anything that's taken out of that escrow.
So when the township has to make multiple copies of something to provide to the engineer and different personnel and supervisors and things along those lines, that's all going to fall under the expense of the permit fee?
It would be under that umbrella, yeah.
The application fee, I'm sorry.
Right, application fee, right.
Yeah.
Application fee, not permit fee, sorry.
Correct.
Are we, is anybody else have, I mean, Chrissy brought up a point, does anybody else have a thought on that? That's something that we are reached consensus on, or is it?
I mean, I'm generally in agreement. I don't have any, I don't see any downside to that.
Okay. Unused application fee.
To one of the requirements.
Yeah. Should be.
I mean, um, just to maybe clarify a little bit if I can, the application fee is gonna be like a flat fee, okay? There shouldn't be anything left over. Um, if there is something, that would be, uh, the escrow, any unused escrow, we would send back to them, all right, for whatever reason, so.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was saying the application fee, it says for any administrative costs incurred.
Yeah, and administrative being, um, yeah, in, internal administrative costs, like zoning officer, you know, or, you know, any processing there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so Jack, if, if, if the township goes beyond that four thousand fee in, in review costs, there is no replenishing that?
Yes.
It's four thousand even.
According to this.
According to this, right, so maybe we do add language if it, it needs to be replenished as it's drawn down?
No, there is, there is language that says the fees, the application fee may be, um,
Adjusted from time to time.
From time to time with a resolution from the supervisors.
Right.
I don't think that's project specific, though.
Right, so future applications, it could increase the fee amount, but once a developer pays an application fee for that particular development.
That's it.
That's it. If the township spends eight grand administering that permit, then the township's out four grand.
Yeah, so maybe we modify that, or recommend it be modified.
If they don't spend all the four grand, it should come back.
Yeah, we need more.
But he's saying, hey, if they need more, they should have the ability to go ask for more.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want to limit it at that because, I mean, every, every situation's different, so we need the opportunity to, um, recoup or, um, consider additional, you know, fees, but that's it. That's why I have a problem if it goes under application fee. The application fee should be a set fee, period. That's just for the application. Then there's, you know, administrative costs like, like, you know, escrow and that type of thing, so that's a bucket that holds money for a variety of different things.
So maybe we leave the application fee as is? And catch everything else with the
We gotta draw a line.
Other escrow, right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Can we jump ahead to the setbacks? That, that's the biggest issue, correct? What is that? What are those setbacks?
Well, when we're talking about setbacks, one of the things that Candy had made mention of is under notices where it's, uh, residents or property owners within four thousand feet of the planned surface location you notified, however previously, um, under conditionally used application. In addition, um, all protected structures within two thousand feet of the property line of the well site shall be identified, so I, I think for consistency, they should both be two thousand, but, um, if anybody disagrees, I'm, I'm happy to, to talk about it.
Well, I think if we're gonna go out to schools beyond, I don't know, twenty, schools are twenty-five hundred. So shouldn't we at least capture that distance?
That seems fair. I think twenty-five hundred feet for both, as long as it's consistent.
For.
Well, the conditional use is two thousand feet from the, um, property line of the well site. And then the notices say four thousand feet of the planned surface location of the development or facility. So not only do the distances not match, but the, you know, the line from where you would measure doesn't ma- match either.
I would say twenty-five hundred feet from the property line of the well site.
I would agree, yeah, to make them consistent.
Would make it consistent and a little bit more streamlined.
'Cause I don't know what the planned surface location of, yeah, I don't know what that means.
Okay, need consistent distances for?
Notices and conditional use.
Well.
Well, under the conditionally use, it's, it's identifying any of the protected structures within two thousand feet of the property line. So it's not notifying them in that instance, but identifying, and so if they have not been identified or be required to be identified before, I don't know why they.
What are the, go ahead, sorry.
I, I guess it's just notification should be of who's been required to be identified, and if somebody is beyond that identification line, um, not that there shouldn't be a public notice, because there are.
There will be, yeah.
But for, for direct notification from the operator or applicant, I would think you'd wanna be consistent with who they've already had to identify.
So we want, right, so we want one E.
And three A.
One E and three A.
To match distances.
And.
From the property line.
Okay, where's the, three A. Perfect. Yeah, 'cause as I'm trying to write it, I'm like, how am I gonna write this in a way that they're gonna understand it? Now we can point to those two spots and say, hey, these two numbers are nowhere near each other, and we're recommending twenty-five feet, or twenty-five, twenty-five feet, twenty-five hundred feet.
Twenty-five feet, yes. One property owner. Really, that's a really small lot.
They are.
Recommend twenty-five hundred feet. Okay. Oh, from property line.
Property line.
From, from.
From the, the property line of the well site.
The well site.
And now, if nobody else has anything between there and five, Dave, let's talk about setbacks.
That's right, that's the, that's the big one.
Double check, make sure.
And we do agree on the permits. It should be consistent with the state, five years to develop and not two.
Right.
I will say, I think Lauren, you had made mention of with three D, um, notifying the township within twenty-four hours of a non-emergency spill. Isn't any spill considered notifiable?
Yeah, according to the state, um, any spill that escapes, I'm sorry, um, do you know where, where we are?
Three D.
Three D, okay, yeah, um, any spill that escapes containment, according to the state, they have to be notified. So there's no real cons, a non-emergency spill would be one that is captured by the, the primary and secondary containment on a well site at, that does not create a, a, a discernible environmental impact. The township doesn't wanna be notified every time you have like a, a one gallon or a five gallon spill that's captured by containment. They should be notified every time the Pennsylvania DEP is required to be notified for a spill that leaves the well site or leaves containment, and I don't think that's really, to me, I, when I read it, it, it sounds like every time a drop hits the, uh, the containment on a well pad, that you should be picking up the phone within twenty-four hours and calling the township.
Yeah, I, I mean,
Yeah.
i- i- it, it reads as over the top to me.
Is the concern with that, and this is conjecture on my point, but, uh, it says "The operator will remove or cause to be removed to the satisfaction of the township and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection inspectors all waste materials from any public or private property." With that is the concern that, of how the waste is being removed, whether it is in containment or not, secondary containment?
I mean, it's just something, I, I mean, you get a something as simple as a, a hydraulic line leaks and somebody throws down a pig mat to, to, you know, while they fix the, you know, while they stop the leak, and, and notification needs to be made to the township for that.
Well, it's, it's, the fix is simple, is to remove the word "non-emergency spill" and just say, "The township, uh, should be notified for a reportable spill, reportable in light of current Pennsylvania DEP regulations."
As, as defined.
As defined, yeah, and which is a five ga, over five gallons that leaves containment. Yeah. The rest of it is fine, because if the waste or whatever leaves the, 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 the site, or you have some other issue or leak, I mean, the operator's gonna have to follow the Act Two process at the state level and do all the things that they would need to do to, to clean up whatever they, that, that left their site.
I, I, I agree with you. I think I'm just asking more so because I've seen wording further on in the ordinance, particularly regarding how cleanup or water or storage or anything along those lines. So it, it seems that that is a concern, and I want to make sure that we're looking at it from that aspect to address it.
Yeah, thank you.
So what I, what I wrote is, three D recommend changing non-emergency spill to reportable spill as defined by the P A D E P. And I. I struggle to think of any situation outside of that, that the township would want to know, let alone need to know.
Right.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing before setbacks.
Three E?
Um, four E, shall, shall establish safety zones.
Before we get to that one, let's go to three E, because I think one of our residents, I think Candy brought that up. Was that you, Candy?
Yes, she did, regarding flaring, that it is not necessarily planned.
Yeah, it, it's, flare neck, I mean, are they referring to the planned flaring of a well? Or are they referring to emergency, cause it does, it doesn't, there could be emergency flaring.
Flaring is not obviously very common, so a lot of them are emergency flaring where you need to, or that's not planned. The state really doesn't look kindly on planned flaring anymore these days. So it would be, you'd be hard pressed to say, I'm gonna have an emergency planned flare in seven days from now.
That's, that's what I'm saying, like, it's an emerg, flaring, I think, I'm reading this and, and what I'm picturing in my head that maybe they were thinking of was like the old days, whenever, whenever they would flare the well.
Right, well.
We don't see that happen anymore.
In the old days, you didn't know how, I mean, you didn't know how much pressure you were dealing with. This is where I get back to like stopping hydraulic fracturing mid stage is, is not a good idea. But, but yes, I, I think that's what they were thinking, and plus, if you look at the, at the state requirements, you, you are supposed to notify them within a certain amount of days. I can't promise that at seven, I'd have to go back and look before you hydraulic, hydraulic, start hydraulically fracturing a well. There is a certain timeframe. I think it's a week, I'm just not sure.
So I think that's what they're referring to, not necessarily emergency flaring, is they're, they're referring, it says, before hydraulic fracture or flaring activities.
The two things are different, obviously.
They refer into the establishment of the well.
Right.
Of, of, the well actually beginning to produce.
Yep.
I think that would be a, an instance where we probably need clarification stating not pursuant to required or necessary emergency flaring.
Or, I mean, and, and help me out here, Lauren, cause I think you might know, back whenever flaring was a normal part of the operation, would that be also considered the start of hydraulic fracture?
Sometimes. I mean, it, it, it depends. It, it, you know, it, you, you don't wanna flare if you don't have to.
It's just wasted profits going to the atmosphere.
So ideally, you don't want to. But back in the day, you didn't know what the pressures were like. Now you have a better idea of what's down there and how much pressure you're gonna have and you can control it, which is why you have blowout preventers and other things.
I'm just trying to think of a way to word that.
But you're, you're right, it, it, it really should just be hydraulic fracturing, you know? If you have an emergency where you have to flare, you're not gonna know seven days in advance, but you would wanna notify the township that, and you'd notify the state, you know, that, that that was happening, or that needed to happen.
Would that be captured, would, would flaring be captured under three D? Any, after any spill, leak, or malfunction?
No, that, that's related to, you know, the flowback, the water that comes back up after you, yeah.
I think with that, when you're saying malfunction, any kind of malfunction that could possibly lead to
Right.
unneeded flare for emergency.
That's what I'm saying, like, emergency flare might be captured under three D.
Yeah.
And so we can just take out flaring activities and just note just hydraulic fracturing.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Is flaring even part of fracking?
No.
It's two separate concepts.
Yeah.
So what, shouldn't even be in the same sentence.
Correct.
Let's, I think that's what we're saying, is, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause there's no definition for flaring here either, so.
Right. So I'm just gonna put three E, remove quote, or flaring activities, end quote. Okay.
Four E, there is a statement that operators shall establish safety zones around well sites. Said safety zones will be established to minimize local impacts, and said zones will be determined on a site-by-site basis. What is a safety zone? And I will defer to you on that one.
Well, funny you're gonna defer to, to, to this construction safety professional, cause I was gonna defer to the oil and, and gas professional. Is, is, is there an established industry standard there? Is, is that, is that a industry term?
No.
Okay.
You have a, a you, you have a, 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 what's called a, a plan, you know, and they have specific, it is site-specific.
The PPC plan?
The PPC plan, that's where I was going.
Which is, it is site-specific, and that's also required in here, but
Yeah.
it can be a little bit difficult to have that.
You would not have that at the time of the conditional use here.
It is required.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be a problem.
Safety zones, it says here, "Safety zones will be established to minimize local impacts." Isn't that what a setback does?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I, I, again, not knowing what a safety zone is, are, are you talking about you having to take over somebody's property because you need a bigger zone? I, I, I don't know. I mean, that, that's a foreign term to me.
Maybe we state, uh, three. Oh, four E, thank you, thank you. Four E, define safety zone and, and or remove.
The only other thing I could think of was if there's a, an emergency on site during construction and people need to, and that's part of the PPC plan.
And the emergency response plan that's in the PPC plan, yeah.
That you would need to locate to certain areas, or certain exits, or certain places around or outside of the, the well site directly.
We were talking about must, the established muster points, yeah.
It's, it's, it's an accepted.
But that's not a safety zone, that's, I mean, I would.
Yeah.
That was the only thing I could equate it to in my mind, so that's why.
Operator at the state level would be required to develop an emergency response plan within their PPC plan, but that wouldn't have to be submitted to the state until they were ready to drill.
And so establish safety zones, but then, and I see what you're saying, like, maybe a safety zone's a safe place to go to, like a muster point, right?
Right.
But then when you read the next line, it says, "Said safety zones will be established to minimize local impacts." So to me, it's, it's more of establishing a a safe buffer.
That's what you have the setback for.
Which, to me, is a setback.
Yeah.
But should that be up to the township to do that, or shouldn't that be up to the?
Again, I, yeah, I'd look at the, at what's required at the state level with your emergency response plan, that, there's an established template of what that looks like.
Yeah, I, I, I think they have to either define safety zones, cause we have no idea what they're talking about. If we have no idea, then how is anyone else gonna try talking about? So I think they either have to define safety zones, or and potentially just remove that, that section altogether.
It's in, it's in quotations, the, the phrase "safety zones," that's why.
The act of putting it, it, of, of something in the quotation marks in, in the standard without it being defined is, just tells me it needs to be defined.
Yeah.
Okay, I promise that's the last, oh, Dave left. He had to take a break. That's the last thing I have before setbacks. And sighting.
And now we have to wait for Dave. I really appreciate everybody who's stuck with us this long. I also really appreciate everybody's.
Input and comments.
Yeah, and, and, and being respectful throughout the process.
I don't think it's disrespectful, it's on the record, and we will, we will apprise Dave when he returns. Just come to the mic, please.
Jack's just gonna need you to come up to the mic, yep.
Thank you.
So Deborah Lee again. So I've heard you go through measurements and standards and definitions and all of the stuff I would expect you to go through. Not once have I heard you go through your commitment to the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of the township. So setbacks is, speaks directly to that. You guys have said before, when you don't understand something, you wanna reach out to a subject matter expert. I assume none of you are environmental scientists, maybe I'm wrong, or physicians? No? So as you already know, the Pennsylvania Grand Jury, Physicians for Social Responsibility, say, based on multitudes of study, hundreds of studies, hundreds, that the minimum setback for these things, these activities, has to be twenty-five hundred feet for what you're calling protected structures, and five thousand feet for schools. So I want to understand why you guys are not addressing that. Why those subject matter experts, their evidence is not being considered as you're talking about setbacks. And it's not a rhetorical question, by the way.
Well, for me, and, and I won't answer for the commission on this, I'll answer for me. For every subject matter expert that says twenty-five hundred and five thousand, there's another subject matter expert that says a thousand and twenty-five hundred or five hundred feet. So I understand the question you're asking, I'm trying to answer your question for me personally. So you know, we, we discussed that the Pennsylvan, that Pennsylvania has set the minimum setback at five hundred feet, correct? And so that's, that's a long way from five thousand feet, you know, so where I'm at is, is I'm saying, you know, I'm looking at two extremes, and I'm saying that, that there's gotta be somewhere in the middle where, where you know, we can do better than what maybe our state is requiring, but still allow landowners to be able to reap, to, to be able to develop the resources that are available on and under their land, you know, and, and. No, you have to take health and safety into, you have to, and that's, that's why there are setbacks, to your point, that's why there are setbacks. Uh, but like you said, there, there's, there's experts that are saying that it has to be five thousand feet, uh, but there's experts that are also saying five hundred feet, and you know, to my knowledge, there's nobody out there, I haven't heard anybody say ten thousand feet, so, you know, so that's good to me, because that's cause we're not looking between ten thousand feet and five hundred feet, we're looking between five thousand feet and five hundred feet. You know, and so that's where I'm at with it. You know, if we set setbacks at five thousand feet, then we're effectively banning all future development of that, of the shale gas within the township. And that's, I, I think it can be done, I think it can be done safely. And that's where I'm trying to get to, is I'm trying to help our township find where that right place is.
Jason, I would agree with you there. The, the purpose of local, state, and federal regulations is to prevent environmental and other types of impacts. Setbacks is only one tool. The reason that you have regulations, the reasons that you have standards, the reason that you have all of these protections that we've spent the last hour and a half talking about, is to develop it, be able to develop it, you know, in, 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 in light of all of those other interests. And, and protecting the environment, and protecting the health of the residents while allowing it to be developed. You, you, you could have ten thousand foot setbacks, but if you did not have environmental standards, if you did not have regulations, if you did not have best practices, then you, you, it wouldn't matter what the setbacks were, you would still have issues, you would have spills, you would have environmental impacts, you would have health impacts. So I, I think, to Jason's point, I think it's a balance. But there is a purpose that the state DEP has, that the local municipalities have, that even the federal EPA has. I mean, the federal EPA is, has recently passed the most sweeping rulemaking on fugitive emissions, on particulate emissions from vehicles, on any kind of industrial emissions to, you know, help protect the air quality. And, you know, it's really first of its kind. I, I'd really invite you to check out the over three thousand page document that was passed this year under the current administration, uh, that really clamps down on, on, on overall industry, not just the oil and gas industry, to help improve air quality. So those things, you know, all of those different regulatory agencies have a purpose. Uh, and they all work together to allow for that balance to happen between property, private property owner rights, but now obviously not infringing upon your neighbors' rights, and I think that's what we're, we're here to do.
I mean, it, it, it's, to me, it starts here, you know, at, at the local level. Yeah, the, what the, the feds are gonna set their standards, you know, I've, I've been on record before, federal sta, standards, anything even related to safety, their minimum standards are their baseline. States can and should go above those when they, when they feel that they need to, in order to protect their residents. And, and each level of government, as we get closer down to the local level, should take that and look at that, and look at all the levels of government that are above them, and look at what they're doing as minimum standards, and then see if they feel the need to go above and beyond that. I, I personally do, I, I feel that we need to go above.
And, and you have to be careful, because, you know, each of those levels have, have jurisdiction, and when you conflict or infringe upon their jurisdiction, that makes it very easy to get an entire ordinance thrown out or challenged, and that's what we don't wanna have happen, of course, after going through all of this.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a very clear distinction between conflicting with existing, you know, state or federal, or even county standards, as opposed, being in conflict with them, as opposed to going above and beyond them, so.
I believe Candy has a question. Would you please come up to the microphone? Thank you.
So, okay, so in response to that, are you saying, what did you say that the state regulations are for setbacks?
There's not a state regulation for setbacks, there's a law, it's called the Oil and Gas Act of 2012 that established a five hundred foot setback from occupied structures.
Which is also where we would find the definition for occupied, as we discussed.
And I could be wrong about this, but I always thought, it was my understanding, that as a municipality, you weren't allowed to regulate higher than what the higher, the higher governing body. So like, for instance. So like, for instance, if it's 500 feet, I always thought the law was that you weren't allowed to supersede, the, the local wasn't allowed to supersede the state or the federal in what they require. Does that not apply in this case?
I, I, I'm not a legal expert there unfortunately. I think a township can propose what they want to propose at the risk of potentially being challenged.
I believe I learned that information from a particular supervisor who's been on this board for many, many, many moons. So I, that's always been my understanding from what he said, that you were allowed, you weren't allowed to supersede like what the state did. So, that makes me question.
Do you have state numbers on the minimum?
The state number, you're, you're correct, Deborah. The state number is a minimum setback and the township is required as far as land of where a facility can go as far as development. Where the township cannot supersede is what they are not legally able to do so. Like they can't require something like air monitoring when that's required and, and governed by the EPA and not by the township. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. But the other thing is, is I mean, regarding her question regarding setbacks, you also have, you also have a fine line about, I understand their concerns, but you also have landowners. And if you start taking a piece of property and giving a 5,000-foot setback, you basically outlawed it in the township and you're basically going to lose right then and there.
Right.
You have to be able to allow your landowners that have the pieces of property to have, allow them to have setbacks, that allow them to still develop their property, the same as everybody else. I mean, you just can't say, because you want to put a well pad on your property, too bad. You know, and I mean, that's, that's the line. I mean, I understand their concerns about the health and safety and everything else, but you know what? We have airplanes flying over the chemtrails. We have dyes in our foods. We have a lot of concerns about health and safety besides just wells that we're exposed to every day. But I don't want to see a landowner lose their right to develop their property. I mean, where I live, it can go right behind me or it can go across the street. Oh, wow. I don't have a choice. I don't own that property and I will not tell a landowner, you cannot do it. I mean, I'd rather, in, in all honesty, I'd rather you put a well pad behind my house than you would a housing plan. Because you know what? After a certain period of time, that well's going to go into production and I never have another neighbor again. And I get to look at green space, not someone's backyard. And I think there should be 5,000 feet between housing plans between my backyard and theirs, so. You know, I mean, you just have to, it's just a, I mean, you, guys are in a hard position because you have to like balance it out no matter what you do, but we also can't be going down the line where we end up losing over something stupid in court either because we want to be so restrictive.
Agreed. It, it, it's a balancing act and that's, it's difficult.
Somebody's going to lose. Somebody's not going to be happy, but you just, you just have to do the best you can.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think Dave's back?
Wait, yeah, sorry. Yes, yes, setbacks, okay. So right now, the township, the, the latest proposal is 1,000 feet and 2,500 feet to a school. And if we have no issue with that, there is no further comment to the township? Or an agreement of those setbacks? Because that is more stringent than the 500 minimum provided by the state.
Well, but we have to make sure that the language in the ordinance, that it's reflected in the map and it's done correctly. So that's, that's a challenge right now, I think, right?
What's that?
We have to make sure that the, the, the map is appropriately referenced, right?
We talked about the overlay, right? Clearing that up.
There's not a, an affi, well, the map that is a part of the ordinance which we have here doesn't reflect the 1,000 and the 2,500 foot. And then.
I think it, I, I think it does for, for the allowance, because it, because, because there's language in here about. It ignore, I, I think that map does, is the 1,000, 2,500, but it's allowing for the pre-existing, the, the well sites that existed prior to the passing of the ordinance.
And, and I could buy that, but then in, in section 1A1.
Right, where are we at now?
On, on the very first page, down at the bottom.
Okay.
It talks about the. It's hereby declared to be the purpose of this section to amend the Cecil Township zoning ordinance and oil and gas development is a conditional use in areas identified in an oil and gas overlay district within the township which shall be established in a separate ordinance.
Correct.
Is, so that's not this ordinance.
Well, no, thi- this is 24061. The 24039 is the overlay district.
Ooh, okay.
He is right. There, there's a discrep, well, it's not a discrepancy, but there's a reference to the district, zoning district map and then the overlay map, exactly what Deborah was talking about. So they both refer to two different maps.
Yeah.
And that should be consistent for clarity's sake.
Yeah.
In the ordinance.
Where's the? Maybe I missed it. Is it worded differently between the two ordinances? Is that the issue?
Yeah, I'll show you. Exhibit A, okay. So it says official zoning map of the township that is hereby attached as exhibit A. So that, that is in section C right below the definitions. If I jump over to oil and gas overlay district, set forth in exhibit A. Two different maps.
Well, it says condition, so C says, is defined as a conditional use in the oil and gas overlay district as defined on the official zoning map of the township. So I, I think that's, and then the oil and gas district is set forth exhibit A and is contained in the official zoning map of the Cecil Township. So I think that's consistent. Obviously, the zoning map will be updated if and when these get passed and then it would show up as an overlay district, just like the.
M U R and M U C.
Yeah.
M U R and M U C.
Or M U R and M U C, yeah. So I, I, I think that's consistent, but I mean, I could be reading it wrong.
It could just be semantics that exhibit A is listed as the official zoning map versus the oil and gas overlay district, or the, the wording lends to interpretation of both.
Yeah, because there's nothing attached, like it says attached as exhibit A. We didn't get any attachment with 240-61. We got an attachment with 24039.
Correct.
So that, because 24061, it doesn't exist yet. Because it, it won't exist until this is passed. But it'll be attached in reference as an exhibit. Am I reading that wrong?
So it needs to reference exhibit A in 24039? Or is it also going to be an exhibit in this ordinance?
No, I, I think, I don't even know if there's a need to have an exhibit A on the ordinance. It just, I mean, maybe they could just, maybe that's the issue. Maybe they can just say, where, where's that? Oh, it's in C. I'm, I'm over at the purpose. Yeah, it could just say, under C zoning, you just say, as, is defined as a conditional use in the oil and gas overlay district as defined on the official zoning map of the township. I don't think it has to be attached as an exhibit to the ordinance to begin with.
Says attached.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, change the wording.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's, like, that's where we're at, is we're looking at recommendations. Like, let's recommend not even referencing, why have the map in two different places? Now you have to update it twice.
Here's the zoning district map. That's on our website.
Right, and it wouldn't be on there yet because 24039 hasn't passed yet. When 24039 passes, it creates the overlay district that would then be incorporated into that map. Right? So I don't think there's any need to reference exhibit A under C in 24061.
That makes sense to me and that leads to hopefully less confusion with maps.
Do we want to eliminate exhibit A, the reference to exhibit A in 24039?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate it from 24039. I would say that the oil and gas overlay district is set forth in ordinance 24039 because it is an overlay, so it is something that, that could exist. I, I keep thinking of those, those transparent things that you could draw on and project. I'm dating myself. Yes, transparencies in school. Yes. And, and so the overlay map, I, I think of it as, okay, this is where these places are. And then that overlay is put on top of the zoning map and it's, it works in, in tandem and in harmony with the zoning map. But it could be taken off to say, am I wrong, Barbara?
Well, no, I, I was just thinking, if, if the map isn't referenced at all, how could we use it as an official zoning map? I mean, it's like, it has to somehow be in cor, I would think somehow incorporated.
Well, 24061 references 24039 and 24039 references the map. But they're trying to reference the map under both.
Yeah.
Let one reference the other which references the other rather, so it's a straight line instead of intersecting lines.
That makes sense to me. Does it make sense to you?
Yeah, I think so.
When we're going further down into the setbacks, when it's talking about, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna, I, I have things when we're finally done.
Okay. With the, the waiver of the parameters of the overlay district. And, and this could be something that the solicitors already worked through, but it sounds like they need waivers really from all property owners adjacent to the applicant's property. So it, it says applicant shall obtain, shall notify and obtain approval of the waiver in writing from all property owners adjacent to the applicant's property. So it's, it seems like it's not just approval, it's, it's a waiver from them as well if it changes the setback for the adjoining property.
So all it is saying is saying that if I own enough property that I want to let them drill closer to my home, that's fine. But by moving it close to my home, I can't also move it within the setbacks from somebody else's property.
Okay, thank you. That makes much more sense. Thank you.
So Jason, are we, we all read Lauren's comments. Are we going to attach those as recommendations as well?
I don't know at this point, because I don't think that, I don't think that we've all, all, I, I don't know that we've all agreed on every point that Lauren has made. I think we've used a lot of them, but I don't know that we, I don't know.
It's up to you guys.
That's a, you know, because I, Lauren, I think you reference, I think you recommend staying with 500 feet, don't you? I can't remember now. I know you've said it verbally, but I don't know if you ever.
I've, I've said verbally that 500 feet, according to the recent study that just came out with DEP and CNX is safe, but I didn't, I don't specifically state that in my written comments.
Yeah, I can't, I can't recall and.
I wanted clarification on the definitions first because then we could make an informed decision on what those setbacks actually look like. Occupied structure, what is a school, so.
I think we all know what they want to define school as. We're just telling them, you need to actually say it.
Right. I, you know, I think 500 foot is safe, however, I, you know, if, if, if that's where they feel that they need to be, you know, to make a compromise or, you know, to be, you know, sympathetic to the residents while allow, still allowing development in certain areas, you know, I, again, my, my heart of hearts thinks that 500 feet just based on science is, is good. But, you know, I, I think there, there's also risk involved too with respect to increased setbacks, with respect to being challenged. No, that's just my feedback.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, to your point, Barbara, I just can't. I don't know if I have it printed out here in front of me, so I, so I don't know if I can.
Well, also, I defer to you as chair as how to do this, but given that we have so many questions and these are pretty material comments, especially with regard to fleshing out definitions and basis for things. I know I wouldn't be able to certainly put any kind of seal of approval on this moving forward. And this is really our only opportunity, based on, I guess, the schedule, to say if, if, if we should move this forward. I wouldn't be able to do that tonight.
I don't think we need to. I mean, at the end of the day, we're recommending body. We can say, we think you should approve this and they can say, nope. Or we can say, we think you absolutely should not approve this and they can say, you know, we're going to anyways. I mean, and that, that has happened before, which is why we now, you know, review their previous month decisions so that we kind of get feedback on the direction the board of supervisors want to go so that we can, you know, make more informed decisions, more informed recommendations.
Well, I know, I get that, so I'm just saying that.
I don't think we, no, I'm with you. I'm saying, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. And that we don't need to, I don't think we need to make a recommendation to, to approve or anything. But we're saying, I think the direction we've been heading is.
In every other situation, we do.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I would not be able to do the same thing that we do with all our other business.
I can't either.
Okay.
And, and this, in this case, it's not even on our agenda. So, so I, I think for, it's, it's more, if we're going to make recommendations that if this is the direction the board of supervisors are looking to go, these are the things that, that we think that they need to take a second look at and/or the changes they need to make in order to get to a, a sound and, you know, quality doc, enforceable document.
And that doesn't mean that if there are items that we might not agree on completely as a board, what we can say, hey, we agree on this majority, to say, these are the recommendations that we have to modify the document. That's great and we should pass those on. If there's anything that any one of us feels strongly about, I, I think it is as part of our, our jobs as constituents in this township, not just as planning commission members, to communicate that on record as a comment to the township individually. So if there's anything that you feel very strongly about, that you don't agree as a whole, that the commissioner. No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm encouraging you to, to definitely put that in writing and have that on record for the.
My record is here.
Okay.
I think, you know, to, to your point, Barbara, I'm, I'm, I'm going to defer to Dave on this and, and even Dan, who is enjoying tonight's activities.
Dan's like, I just want to go home.
I don't, I mean, this, I don't know that we've ever done this before, what we're doing right now as a planning commission. I, I mean, it's essentially a work, an open workshop for us, that, I mean, normally, we get given something, we just say, we agree, we disagree. Very rarely do we, have we had the opportunity to make recommendations one way or the other, and never to this something this extensive.
Well, truthfully, I think it, we should be able to make our comments, then the supervisors can digest them before, and, and maybe kicking it back to us. It just seems awfully quick that they would go from this to a public hearing and a vote, if that's the, if that's what they plan on doing. Because that, it, are, are they going to take our comments in? And, or, that would be my question.
I, I, I hope they do. And, and they, remember, they have the ability to say, you know, have their public hearing and then have their special meeting and say, and, and all it takes is one board, member of the board of supervisors to say, I vote that we tabled this. Get a second? Three of them vote yes? Special meeting's over. And this, and, and everything goes on for another month. So, so, I mean, those, that's a possibility.
Can I just recommend one thing? I think it's imperative that we get the planning commission's comments together, one document, send it to not only the chair, but also the solicitor, right? And, I mean, all the supervisors for that matter, but get it to them as quickly as we can.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, so that the wheels start, start turning in that direction.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, just logistically, you know, these end up in the meeting minutes, which aren't approved until mid-September.
Exactly.
So, do we present these via a letter signed by all five of us, if we can agree on these eight or nine items, which I think we can?
If you take Lauren's document, and then, you know, I mean, even in different colors, you can add your, you know, your comments, submit that, right, as, uh, from the planning commission, right? And, you know, if you disagree, then you can say you disagree, but that's a, that's a baseline to, to start with.
I think Dave's always been really good about getting his minutes back to us. I mean, usually, I, I show up to work the next morning, and I have the minutes.
Yeah.
I'm reviewing them the next morning, uh, so.
I think if we can set a deadline to get this out, like, mid-next week.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that, I think.
I get a draft out to you guys tomorrow or Saturday.
Yeah, and you've got my electronic copy of this.
Absolutely, yes, that'll help.
Yeah.
Tremendously.
You can do a lot of cut and paste from that as well.
Yes, yes.
Yep, and then I still intend, you know, to send mine individually as well.
Sure.
Yeah. And I, and it, to Barbara's point, it, it may be Lauren's document, I just.
You don't physically have it in front of you.
I don't physically have it in front of me, and we're working through this a little more organically.
You didn't print it out, bring it with you?
Yeah, I probably do, but I've got, I've got a, a stack here. No, that's not it. There's, there's quite a stack of, of papers here, and various versions of this ordinance with notes on all of them, so.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Did we, so we're not making any changes in Section 5?
I, I pretty much offered my opinions.
I think that's also where protective structure and definition of a school come in, but the 1,000 and 2,500 feet seem to be the most reasonable compromise that we can come to, considering landowners developing their property and conversely, concerns expressed by other residents. I would say, as I think, I don't know if it was Lauren or Jack that mentioned, there is a, a study, and it was just released on, I think it's radical transparency. The partnership between CNX and, when he was then Attorney General, now Governor Shapiro, that has really in-depth studies done by a third party with CNX within the 500 feet from the, well.
And the DEP.
The DEP is involved, but it's also a third party. It's not, the DEP's not driving it, CNX isn't driving the, the actual measurements and study itself.
The headline was CNX and DEP, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the third party's Clean Air Engineering, and then they also engaged Gradient, which is a, you know, health epidemiology, uh, professional outfit.
Who was the, the last one there?
Gradient.
Gradient, okay.
Yeah. Clean air engineering is the air monitor, continuous air monitoring at the 500 foot. So, Dave, I think you're gonna have to, like, take tomorrow off to capture everything.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Is there anything, I mean, you wanted to make comments on six and access.
I, I've said it so many times, Jason. It's in my comments. I, I don't, we don't need to belabor. I don't have anything else to verbally talk about.
I, I, I'm trying to get consensus from, from everybody. Is everyone in agreement with what Lauren said on that?
I'm in agreement.
I think if there's anything above and beyond, as, as Mr. Dizeroff had commented, beyond what's in the HOP, that it, it is okay and acceptable to keep in. Anything that is already covered in the HOP, I, I don't think you need to reiterate something that's already.
Just rough, just extend the distance that goes back.
Yes.
Rather than how it's constructed.
Well, the, the how, and, and some of the how, at least with, from what Mr. Dizeroff was saying, isn't covered in the HOP, is it?
Correct.
So, I, I would say anything, and, and I don't know the entirety of the HOP to be able to articulately say one way or another to, to edit that. But just to say, anything above and beyond the HOP should definitely stay in. And anything already required and governed under the HOP, which is also needed to do the work, doesn't need to be reiterated, per se.
But, but you can't have well pad development that's not on an HOP road or on a state road.
True. Thank you.
Bali Road.
Okay, so.
Well, I, I think Lauren's point was to incorporate by reference, even if it's not a state road, that, that the, the same standard would be met.
Again, every HOP is different. That's why you need the standards in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I'd keep them in.
Okay.
Very good.
Traffic impact.
The only one that I had a question on in that was, well, yes, the only one I had a question on in that section was that only use municipal roads when the use of state roads is not feasible. I, I didn't know how PNDOT felt about that, how, if that was required in, in other ordinances. That's, that's not one that I was familiar with.
I think it's already being done, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. That's what they do already.
That's what they're already doing. Yeah, because, I mean, the state can't, as long as they're not.
Overweight.
As long as there's not, yeah, as long as there's not a permitting issue, like, oversized or overweight, the state can't restrict their use of it, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean.
We're already pushing them to the state roads.
Okay. To me, that seemed more common sense, but I understand I would want to be in the ordinance.
Environmental air quality.
Is there a different ordinance, I believe there is, for signage? Like, does sign permits need to be applied for, like, for it, where it says the operator shall provide adequate, obvious, and specific signage of the route? Do they need to apply for permits for that signage?
The, the signage they have to put up would have to, would have to follow other township ordinances such as.
Signage, signage is one that would be in conformance with Pub 203, which is the state highway specifications for signs. So, they would follow PNDOT specifications for signs. I know, that's, everybody uses that. That's the governing.
I just didn't know if that needed to be called out here.
No, I think it's already covered.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's on a, that's on a state road, though, as opposed to, like, a township road.
No, we follow the state guidelines on township roads, too. Everybody follows the same because of the vehicle code.
Okay.
Follows the PNDOT.
Know that.
Signs.
Thank you, Mr. Dizeroff.
Glad I'm still here.
Mister.
19B.
I'm sorry, I have to, to bring up 9B.
9B?
Yeah, air monitoring.
Man, I was so far beyond that.
I'm so sorry. I would say that the, the study in the monitoring required by the EPA, that the reports can be submitted to the township, or that we could, we could require that those reports are submitted to the township, but I don't know that we can require that the study or the monitoring is done as a township. I think that has to, to come from a different governing body.
It would come from the DEP, and that's actually in my comments on the bottom of page three.
I think it's completely reasonable to say that we require any and all reports of any studies or monitoring done as far as air quality is concerned, but I, I don't think that we can require that it's done. I just don't, I don't think that's governed by the township itself. I think that's governed.
State and federal.
State and federal.
They can both require you at a specific location, depending on what type of permit that you're getting at the state or federal level to do a study. But that's not required for all well sites or all permits.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, this is requiring monitoring at the well pad. I, I think it'd be different if the township was requiring it at the end, at the, at the edge of the well pad or at the edge of the property line, to ensure that the disturbance, that there's nothing disturbing neighbors.
Okay.
Putting it at the well pad, I, I, I gotta agree with you on that, that that's already covered by DEP.
That's where I, I just, I think it would be.
That's why I said strike it.
Yeah.
And if it is kept in, to just state that we would require any study, any reports, studies, information, any data collected.
Collecting all, sure.
But I, I don't think that we can require the, the study or the collection of the data itself.
And as long as we're going down that road, number 10, pre-drilling, post-hydraulic fracturing and baseline water survey requirements. Existing state law and regulations, you know, don't require an operator to conduct water testing pre and post during oil and gas developments. If, if they choose not to, then they're presumed guilty if there is a, a water supply complaint. Most operators will do so, but it's not a, it's not a requirement. And there's a specific list of parameters that the state has for when those tests are done. According to at least the ordinance, it's, it's really unknown, an unknown list of parameters, or at least not specific list of parameters that you would, the township would require you to, to test to. So, there's, that, that section's problematic as well.
I hear you. I think where the township covers themselves on that is, it starts the, the phrase with, "to the extent that the same is not otherwise included or provided within copies of applications for permits from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or other governmental units and here, and herewith submitted, or where no such permit is required." I, I would just say, this would be another instance of, this is often required at the state and federal level, and we should be supplied with all of the information.
Because 9A, 9A starts off the same way, exactly the same language.
Yes.
The township is just saying, you know, if the, if the state order requires it, great, give us copies. If the state doesn't require it, in this particular instance, then, then the township is.
Right. And we have to be careful about doing baseline studies of private water wells, because Pennsylvania's one of only two states that doesn't have wa, private water well construction standards. Most homeowners do not want to know what's, what's in their private water well, because they don't want to understand whether or not it's contaminated.
Yeah.
When.
I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, there's also the.
We've had a number of, of landowners that actually refuse to have their water tested when you're going around and do a baseline study.
And that can be their choice, that they can opt out of that.
Yep.
But I, but I would think that some landowners would, would welcome that. They never, they've always been curious, but didn't want to, didn't have the money to be able to afford to do the testing themselves. And, uh, you know, are welcomed, welcoming the opportunity to get it done.
And then if, and then if it's no good.
Well, then you're spending the money to, to protect yourself from what was, you were already exposing yourself to.
You hope.
Tying into city water, whatever that takes. Having water muled in. But, yeah, I, I don't know the answer to those. I, I think this starts in 9A and 10A, starting off the same way, is, is how I read it, is to your point, that they're saying, if the state requires it, great, give us copies. The state doesn't require it in all situations, though, and we're saying, we want it. If the state's not going to require it.
I hear you. I'm thinking, I'm processing. I'm processing what Jason just said.
To me, it's, it's the going, it's, it's going above and beyond. It's not conflicting with state law. It's going above and beyond, providing an extra layer, layer of protection. I don't think it's a horrible thing. I mean, it even allows in here that if the landowner refuses to allow, just like you were saying, Lauren, some people don't want to know. And they have that, that op, they have that, uh, the landowner still has that, uh, option.
Not that it matters, but under 10-3, they cite the incorrect regulation when they're citing Chapter 78, but that doesn't matter, I guess.
Well, no, they should. They should cite the right one. Do you know which one it is?
78A. Not 52.
78A?
Yep, little A.
Okay.
It's under B as well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, extender 10B as well, yeah, you're right.
It's throughout, because they've got the old version of the regulation that was updated in 2016. That's, you know.
I guess with that, I, I see, I see what you're saying as far as above and beyond. Um, as far as the monitoring, and so for B in both 9 and 10, I think the township would need to put, "to the extent that the same is not otherwise included or provided within copies of applications for permits by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania." So, it, it's, because the study and the monitoring are two different things, as is the hydrological study versus the testing of all existing water supplies. I understand they're both going for a baseline. To me, the, the water is often, or shouldn't, I shouldn't say often, um, the water is something that makes more sense, because the township deals with the ground, the grading, the, the wear. And that's physically down. Air is with a average of four meters per second wind speed. There's nothing in the, in the study or the monitoring for air that's saying, hey, here's what, what is the baseline before? What is beforehand to say what is after or during? So, I, I just, I hesitate on those, because I, I think they are covered under state and federal. And I, I know that that could easily, easily be challenged, and I, and if our job is to protect the residents, um, it's, it's a balance of how often would that be challenged? How frequently would that be challenged? How stringently would that be challenged? And, um, And is it reasonable to say this is a requirement that the township is imposing above and beyond state and federal?
And when it comes to pre-drill testing, it's voluntary. It is not a specific requirement at the state level.
For water?
Correct. Pre-drill is voluntary.
So the township's just trying to say that within Cecil Township, it won't be voluntary, that it just...
That's what they're saying, yeah. However, if they choose not to do it, they're presumed to be at fault if there is a water supply complaint, if they can't prove otherwise. And that's the way that seventy-eight A fifty-two reads.
Mine on those, on those two points, I'm in deference to the Board of Supervisors and the direction that they want to go with it. That's my personal take on it. If as a commission, we, the majority's in the, it feels otherwise, then that's why we vote. It's... Did you start over? You want us to start the whole meeting over?
No.
Barbara's for it. She's like, yes, let's go.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Connor.
The only one I had any comment on anyways was nineteen.
Okay.
Was the vibrations. And it's, I'm not opposed to the idea of limiting physical vibrations that exist beyond the property line and I'm all for quantifying it, making it so that it's measurable and not just somebody's perception thereof. I just don't know that that's the appropriate standard. I don't know. I'm with Candy on this. I have not where it came from, why they chose that standard to reference.
Wouldn't that be based on the rock formation that they're drilling through on, you know, how big it is and how, you know, that type of thing? That's an uncontrollable factor, just like noise going over somebody's property line. Yeah, it's uncontrollable.
I mean, I, we have a buffer area where I live between us and the heater building there in South Point. Whenever they make deliveries in the afternoon, those trucks vibrate the heck and I can feel it in the house. So I just worry about, you know, it's not like I would complain. That's their delivery time, you know, but we just, setting different and new standards for one, you know, industry's vibration and not another, I always worry about as well.
I just love that you labeled on the business that my brother-in-law works at, not the one that I work at right next door.
Oh, of course. And I didn't know any of that. The heater building actually had a truck that tried to navigate out that by the stealth building and knocked one of the light poles down. You had knocked the whole thing down.
Okay, so you were talking about my building. That's not the heater building. That's Centaur.
Okay.
That's us.
Well, there you go. That was you. That had a truck driver that hit the lamppost.
Yeah, I know. I've been dealing with it for a week and a half now.
I saw it happen.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was sitting there waiting for the truck to move and ding, and then he left and went away.
Well, now we know.
It's on the record.
Yep. A detective will be in touch.
We're getting loopy now.
Yeah, I don't know. That's probably the only other thing I had on there. So only other note I had for...
In that section, there's also the baseline shall be established by an acoustics evaluation over a continuous five-day period to include a full weekend is under E1. And then there is seventy-two hours mentioned later.
What section?
Yeah, nineteen E1.
Nineteen, you know, E1's where, yeah, five-day period is noted.
Since fluctuations in noise levels, it's in E3, I believe. Nope. I know I had it.
Since fluctuations in noise.
I don't know why I wrote it. I can't find it now.
Yeah, I'm searching it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
I was looking for seven and two numbers. There you go. You got that one? Good catch.
There's also a defend, protect, indemnify, and hold harmless. A couple of different places in this where I am not opposed to it. I just think it needs to be in the conditional use approval that the township and the operator sign and not in the ordinance. It's in forty-three. It is in...
Twenty-two.
I believe.
Yeah.
It's before then as well.
Is there a reason why you think it should be in the conditional use and not in the ordinance?
I think it's a legal agreement and I think it's something that the operator should sign if they're going to agree to that. Because an agreement requires both parties.
Wouldn't make an application in light of the existing, with full knowledge of the existing ordinance?
It would. You're right. It just is repeated in several places and it just seems like it would be in a signed, mutually agreed upon document.
I just know that I redline a lot of that language when I'm presented with them. So with contracts, or I try to. So by putting it in ordinance, you can't redline it. That's true. But I don't know that that would hold up. I think that's, I don't know. Anybody can sue anybody.
What was the other item that you had?
It was just the vibration.
Vibration?
That it's just not the, I don't know that that's the right standard. I'm not a, we already have an ordinance on the books that says vibrations cannot, essentially can't disturb your neighbors. You know, but it's not quantified. The attempt to quantify it, I appreciate it. I just don't know that that's the right standard to use.
And there is no section forty-four in twenty-two. It's section forty-three. So the wrong number in there.
Yeah, she said forty-three.
It's forty-four as written. Should be forty-three.
It is forty-three.
Am I looking at a different version?
I hope not.
Right before D, right? And now I gotta walk down to you.
Twenty-two, section forty-four.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, referring to section forty-four that doesn't exist.
Yep, nope, you're right. Okay. That's what he, we thought your section had a forty-four.
No.
Okay. So in section twenty-two, the first place where she brings up the indemnification clause...
I think it's before then too.
It says, "The applicant shall fully protect, indemnify, and hold harmless township as more specifically set forth in section forty-four," but it should be forty-three.
In thirty-four, one of the things that is listed, and I apologize, I know I'm getting into semantics, but the operator shall provide to the township a list of the job titles which constitute supervisory personnel as far as bunk housing is concerned for anybody that would need to be there to rest. Job titles are going to be different from operator to operator. I think they would need to do a description of role or responsibility and not a title.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I just read it as they're trusting them to say, hey, just name the job titles of the handful of people you need to stay there.
Okay.
Then if zoning shows up, they'd be like, no, this is our field supervisor. You said he's... Anybody read it? I'm with you. It's a long...
It's a shame we're put in this position.
It is. So... Are we at the end of our list?
End of the ordinance.
Well, we're at the end of the ordinance, but I have more in the facilities one because I'm more familiar with it. Like, one of the things says in thirty-six five, or...
Oh, yeah, 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 thirty-six.
Thirty-six A five. It says, "All noise generating equipment and processes shall be contained within a completely enclosed building or sound attenuating structure would be the appropriate wording, and windows and doors shall remain closed during the operation." There are times during the operation where equipment needs maintenance done and things like that where as a matter of safety, it is better to have the doors open, particularly regarding if it's in the middle of summer and you're having to work on a large compressor. You're going to want to have the door open during maintenance. So I just, I don't want that to stay in and say, no, it doesn't matter. They have to keep the doors closed at all times.
I mean, unless the Town Board of Supervisors' position is that they have to provide adequate HVAC for environmental control within the space, which...
There is, I mean, there is HVAC. It's just if there's, let's say, six compressors or eight compressors, there's other ones that are working. Yeah, so...
I work construction. I deal with it all the time. So I can see it both ways.
Yeah.
But to your point, yeah, it doesn't, it either puts a burden onto the operator of the facility to have an over-the-top environmental control system.
And then I think nine is understandable when practicable, when practicable is stated so that if for some reason it is not practicable or possible for the appropriate amount of electricity to be run somewhere for a compressor station, that internal combustion engines would be used. That's a public utility and that's often not something that the operators can control. But when you get into ten where it's talking about an exhaust muffler, mufflers, or an exhaust muffler box, the entire purpose of a compressor station is to take the gas that comes in from a variety of wells and compress it and have it be able to move out of that compressor station at a certain pressure to move at a certain speed to get to a processing plant. An exhaust is monitoring the flow of gas. It's monitoring the flow of fumes, the speed at which it does that. It has to be at a certain pressure to go. Otherwise, there would have to be a whole lot more compressor stations.
I think they're saying if you use diesel engines to run your compressors, you gotta have mufflers on them. You can't run wide-open exhausts.
Okay. That makes sense. It's just, I don't want it to impact the, I don't want there to be eight million compressor stations when there doesn't need to be.
No, no. I think it's, because, I mean, that reminds me of the argument over the compressor station that was previously approved on nine eighty. Like, you know, there was the debate over, could it be done with electric or diesel engines and how loud are those diesel engines gonna be?
And then when you get into fourteen, it's going back into noise and it says with modification that DBC sound levels do not exceed six decibels over ambient at any time. And that goes, that contradicts what the DBC requirements are in the noise section.
Well, I think they're saying that's the modification with the modification that they're not given the, the compressor station's not going to shut down at night. So they're saying not to exceed six decibels over ambient at any time. So it's allowing the compressor station to run twenty-four seven.
Okay. That makes sense. I just, I think six decibels is...
Very quiet.
It is very quiet. It is very, very small of a modification when you're going on the DBA scale, the general conversation is at usually about sixty. And many ordinances have seventy or seventy-five as the DBA requirement. And so that's ten to fifteen and this is going to six.
Yeah. No, I...
And so I just, I think it's a bit excessively stringent.
I think your setbacks are gonna work well with that anyways though, because once you get to a thousand feet.
Yeah, sound dissipates.
Yeah.
Sound, very tricky. I don't think I have anything else that I feel like I need to bring up right now.
You guys are still here. I'd be in my pajamas by now.
Do we want to make a motion on our recommendations or do we want, or do we feel comfortable just that we discuss them as a group and Dave's written down what we've come to an agreement on and he's gonna put that forward? I mean...
I don't think we need to make an official motion because it wasn't an official agenda item. I think we could be in agreement that he's gonna summarize all of our comments and then if we...
Everyone reviews it.
Yeah.
And then Jack can submit it.
And then we all individually can attach whatever other comments that we'd like to make.
And I think it would be maybe good to agree that once you do summarize and send to all of us that we all agree in writing via email to say, yes, please send this on so that we...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the point where I think we all sign it.
Yeah, I mean...
We'll make it in the form of a letter and...
It's the product of the, it's a consensus. It's a product of the workshop, but it's not an official motion. Dan, I mean, do you got any feedback on this?
I, it's really just meeting minutes is all it is.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Actually, Dave, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Ten thirty-two.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.